Tyler.
Mayor, one other thing, the record should reflect that you're here too, even though you didn't.
I'm here, I'm sorry. I thought we saw that, okay. I'll do the roll call. Tyler?
Yes, first of all, I appreciate you have given me this opportunity to do this and appreciate what y'all are doing for the community as well. Let us pray again. Lord Jesus, as we came to you once again today, Lord, we're so thankful, God, for this day, God, and Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity to, Lord, to be a light in this dark world, God, and we're thankful, God, for those that know you, God, and we pray, Lord, those that don't know you, I pray that they will come to find you and know you as their Lord and Savior, God. We pray, Lord, that you'll lead this board and guide them and direct them, God, and help them make the best decisions possible for the kingdom of God, Lord, and we pray, Lord, if there's anyone out there, that's those that's less fortunate, those that seek God, and those that are lost, God, I pray that you'll deal with their hearts and, and Lord, give them an opportunity, Lord, to make things right with you, God, and help us make decisions that would uplift the kingdom of God and be a light in this dark world, Lord. We love you, Father, and we thank you for it all, in Jesus Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Tyler. Doreen, I'm gonna pick up the flag if you want to do the flag here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Now, the first, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have beer board minutes from January the 25th. Does everyone have the opportunity to read these? I think you have a minute, Tom.
We have what?
It's a beer board meeting. It's the beer board meeting, same meeting, which was held on January the 25th. Is there any changes or corrections to these? If not, do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Approve.
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion from Alvin.
Yeah, if somebody else didn't do it, that's fine.
I'll second it then, just so I can be involved.
Okay, second from Nate. We go to a roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Mayor, record your vote.
I will. Alvin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Then the next meeting will be the PH, let me look and see what we've got here to make sure I'm doing that properly correctly, was a public hearing. And that was on January the 25th, part two. Okay.
Or was it a special called meeting?
Hold on.
I'm not seeing.
PS, that's what I'm looking at. Deb, was that a special call meeting or was it a public hearing? It's a special call on February the 11th. And then we have the planning, and we have the council meetings on January the 25th. So we have three different, one, two, three, four different sets of meetings here. One we've approved. What's PH, Debbie? Public hearing? January the 25th. Council meeting, January the 25th. And then a special call meeting on February the 11th. So there's three sets of minutes that's been put together here. Counsel, I think you've all reviewed those.
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes or corrections to either set of these minutes?
Do them one at a time, Mayor.
Yes, sir. So we're gonna go back to the public hearing on January the 25th. Same meeting. Does anyone have any corrections to these minutes? Or additions?
Do not.
Okay, roll call vote then. Nate?
Needs to be a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the January 25th City Council Public Hearing.
Okay.
Regarding the ordinance 2-21. Just 'cause I'm looking at it. How's that?
Second.
Okay, Zoe? All right, roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen? Doreen?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, the next set will be the council, the council meeting on January the 25th.
I have no corrections.
Does anyone else have any corrections? Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th, City Council.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jessica?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Doreen? Yes, for myself. And then the final set of meetings is a special call meeting on February the 11th. You have those in your package. Do you have any corrections or revisions or additions to those? Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes for the special call meeting on February the 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes February the 11th.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not. Roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Okay, that's all our minutes. Our next, um, we have, well, there's something, yeah, let's go ahead and do that because we're gonna change some of the stuff on here where we're gonna get bothered down. And next we have is committee reports. Police Department, Jack, are you here? Jack? Okay, Jack's here somewhere, I think. Deb, could you text and see where Jack sat, please? And then Fire Department, do we have a report from them, Deb?
There's Jack.
Okay, Jack's here now. Jack?
Unmute him.
He's muted.
There you go, you're ready.
Okay. We have had four theft, larceny, that's four arrests. We've had one drug-related arrest. We had six accidents, which that was due to the, to the weather. Didn't have any fatalities. And 18 citations. We have issued five city ordinance citations as well.
How is everything going, Jack, with the weather and everything? How are you guys doing?
It, it's going fine. It was, was a little, it was a little monotonous there for a little while, but we just have to deal with it.
Counsel, do y'all have any other questions for Jack?
Jack, when you said you issued five city ordinances, is that like the codes?
Yeah, yes, yes, it is, Doreen.
Okay, is that just you doing that or is it the whole department? What is it?
The, the, the whole department can issue a city ordinance citation. I know myself and Mike Hillgore have issued, have issued those five.
Okay, all right.
And those are, we found them were brought to your attention, correct, Jack?
Right, right.
Can you tell me what they're for?
They are for uncleanness of, like, say, your yard, broken down vehicles, things of that nature.
I know I drove down King Street.
Well, you ought to say that again, Doreen.
I drove down King Street. Winston Avenue.
Yes.
And North West Drive.
Uh huh.
Saying some, so I might need to get a few on some of those too.
Okay.
Jack, what is the process now that you're doing that? And I know you and Earl had talked about that several weeks ago to make sure we know the process. Do they come in and file a complaint if it's somebody that's not brought it up in a meeting or it's been brought to your attention through Earl or one of the council members?
Yes, if it's brought up, if we get a complaint, you know, we, we go to that person and I'll, you know, I'll speak with them and see if I can have something done verbally, if we can address it verbally. And fix the situation. If not, then we issue a citation.
What I'm saying though, would a person come up to Town Hall and fill out a form? Is that how it's done? Or send it to you?
If they wanna, if they wanna fill out a form and they can, that way they can remain anonymous or so that way if they feel like it may, you know, cause problems, then they can do it that way or they can come to the police department.
Okay. Alvin, do you have anything for Jack?
No. Good job, man. Doing good.
Thank you.
Jessica, did you have anything?
Questions.
Nate? Do you have anything else? Doreen?
No, I'm good.
One of the things that did happen, Jack, didn't you say that Officer Burnett was also deployed again?
Yes, he has been deployed. He, he is in Chattanooga currently. He is there for COVID. The, the COVID, where they're giving shots for a control, if anything breaks out.
Yeah, and you said he's probably gonna be deployed right now until the end of March, is that correct?
Yes, his orders are until March 31st.
Okay, all right. So you're just covering that we talked about today with the officers and overtime.
Right, right, yeah, we have officers covering that with overtime.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else for the chief?
Thanks for doing the traffic control. My kids have appreciated it.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I say them every morning.
Sam, thank you, thank you, Chief, we appreciate you.
You're welcome, thank you.
The Fire Department is training tonight. Did, um, we get a report emailed to us, Deb? And we get a copy of it, and I'll read them in a moment. 911, is Heather on here tonight?
Yes.
Heather?
She may need to get unmuted.
Okay, whoever's unmuting, we're looking for Heather Falls, right there she is.
Do I need to mute mine?
Yep, if you don't mind, please.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Fine, how about you?
Yeah, do you have your report, ma'am?
Well, due to the weather and stuff, we had a lot of calls, of course, a lot of traffic and stuff, nothing that couldn't be taken care of by. We did do our audit, we haven't got the results back from that yet. It's gonna take a couple of weeks for them to look over everything and with TBI and all that and get the results back. We do have an issue with not having an IT that they hit us on, so we've gotta work on that. We have spoke with Dawn Hudson also concerning that matter. And we had the scanning of the documents and stuff to attach to the NCIC entries, we got that taken care of. So far, so good. Everything's following right into place.
Counsel?
No questions.
Nate?
Sounds good, thank you.
What is your IT that you're saying? What is the IT that, and that's something Dawn would handle?
That is gonna be our, for our NCIC computers, they have to be fingerprinted and everything, and they have to be cleared before they can come into the office in order to work on the NCIC computers themselves because all the sensitive information that's gathered on them.
And didn't Dawn tell us at one time he handles all that because there's a contract that you guys have with someone for that, is that correct?
Well, we did have the Jamie Bonds, I think Montego City had as their IT. And I, I think y'all said he had quit or quit.
Well, actually, actually Dawn said he had another person, is what he told Wanda.
Yes, he, he, he's checking into that for us.
That's what he told, that's what he had told Wanda before, because we didn't really have, we just had someone uploading minutes on our, I don't know.
I, I think he said he was gonna check with a Taylor Parmley, I think, is the name he, he advised us of that he was gonna check with, so we're waiting to hear back from that.
I think that's that part of the contract that they handle that we don't. According, is that correct, Deb? Yeah, she said the support's done there then. Anyone else have anything else to, Heather? Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Parks and Rec, Alvin, I think is, as far as baseball, I think Chastity Melton's here too, maybe we can let her in now. And also, Alvin, what do you know as far as what we're doing and got done, we'll let Chastity talk to.
Yeah, I know, other than what we found out the other night, I tried to get hold of Casey. But I didn't, wasn't able to, so I think we're kinda waiting on, I don't know about their signos, maybe Chastity can tell us if they're still doing them or if they're through with them and then proceeding to get their uniforms and whatever they need. Actually, yes, you can probably tell.
Yeah, so with the weather, all week last, we were able to get the, the papers into the schools. Hopefully, I went to pick those up today and they weren't ready yet, so I'll go get them tomorrow and try to get them into the schools and hopefully, maybe by Friday, see exactly where we're at and and then, you know, maybe we'll get some good weather and we can actually start having some practices and such.
So everything's going good as far as where we're at and where we're going with the weather, I mean, you know.
Well, I mean, there's, there's been really no change due to the weather. But as soon as we get some pretty days, I think you'll probably see some kids out there on the baseball field.
Jesse, there also are some chalk to line the fields at City Hall that was bought prior year. They said there's several bags, several, so.
Perfect, thank you.
And Alvin, are you gonna go get with the, the employees as soon as they can get the time to go put up that net you said that was out there?
Yeah, I just hadn't talked to him about it yet, but I think that's still in the, in the scorebox, Jesse, the new net that.
Yeah, I believe it's in the press box.
It is.
The, the fencing around the, the back of it needs to be put back up as well.
Right, the short fence, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just waiting to see and, and to weather get better. It won't take that long to put it all up. We'll get to that.
Thank you so much.
Does anyone else have anything for Chastity or?
Yes.
See, I like your idea of, of offering different tiers for fundraising. So I apologize, I haven't replied to your email yet, but I will do that. I'll, I'll do that in the morning, make sure you have that. But it looked good to me. I like that idea.
I think this might be a good opportunity for Chastity to make an appeal to people that are watching tonight. Help with donations for the, for the boys and girls who are gonna play. Each one of them, as I understand, needs about a hundred dollars for their uniforms and shoes and equipment. And it could, it's a tax deductible donation to be made. I'm not exactly certain how the donations come in, either directly to you or through City Hall, but this would be a good time for people that wanna help to make a donation.
Well, we figured, we haven't actually price checked the uniforms yet, but we were figuring seventy-five dollars per kid maximum and really gonna try to stay well below that if possible. We, it, we don't, we don't get their cleats or anything like that. What we would supply is just the jersey top, the pants, and maybe the socks and the belt. But as far as their cleats and those sorts of things, the parents buy those on their own.
And isn't there something in the press box that I don't think Jessica left from last year?
Yeah, I think that there would have been some donations maybe from a, an organization that there are some there. We'll definitely look at those and try to get those out to the, the players who need them. And as far as how the donations are done, it's my understanding that the, the check can be mailed directly to the City Hall with making sure that you put baseball, softball in the memo, and then that'll go into our account, so.
And it's tax deductible. Deb, instead of giving a text form, said that she would give them a receipt. But you're right, Jessica, because there's also in there a sponsorship program for signs. Chastity, if you wanna tell them a little bit about that, because there's a lot of businesses on here and people and organizations, if they wanna be part of the community, if they're helping.
So as of right now, what we know is that in the past, it's been five hundred dollars if an organization gives five hundred dollars or business, then they get not only their, their logo and their, you know, their signing or whatever on a sign that goes on the backstop and on the back of the fence, but they also get their name and logo on the, on the jerseys, so that these will be basically walking advertisement anywhere the team plays, that, the, an advertisement will be happening. So that currently is the only, Bo, do you wanna say something? The only option that we have as, and then also just saying, you know, if you wanna give a donation, maybe you can't do five hundred, then you can give what you can and.
What are the signs, Chastity? The, the
I'm sorry.
The signs they put on the fence that has the business name on it? What, how much do those cost?
Well, and that's, that's what I had proposed, what the, the sponsorship that, that I guess we used last year, only give the option for the five hundred. And I had sent a proposal to do some different tiers where, you know, if you give, I think I said a hundred, then you would get just a sign on the back. If they gave a larger number, I believe I said three hundred, then they would get maybe a sign, like, and I thought, and this is something that you guys all probably need to, to think about as well, if we could do, if they give more money like that, then could we do some sort of signage that could be seen from the road? So that, you know, not only people who come to support the baseball, if they come to the games, softball, baseball games, see it, but if, could we do some sort of signage on the fence closest to the road so that that can be seen when a person's driving through? And then, of course, the five hundred dollar tier which gets the, the, on the jersey.
Yeah, I think they've used that outside fence before for signs. I mean, you can look at it, but I don't think it'd be a problem, because I think it's been used before for, should be okay.
Now, they used all the way around it, didn't they, Alvin, when you did it?
Yeah, it was, yeah, I don't see a problem, so.
Anyone else? I guess not. Thanks, Chastity, we appreciate it.
Good job, guys, appreciate you.
Okay, next we'll have utility. John, and are you Travis Wilson on here, just in case we need to refer to Travis?
I am, I'm here.
Somebody just had a chat, no, I don't, we can't read those right now, but if somebody can look at that and see what ideas and note it, we'll get to that in just a moment. I just, you know, missed it. Go ahead, John.
Well, I don't have nothing really unless you all got anything. Of course, Travis, he'll probably tell you about the flow monitor and stuff.
Well, we'll hand it over to Travis. Travis, you here? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we see you too.
Okay. We are continuing with the flow monitoring project. The contractor will be checking those weekly. I believe they should be up there, they may have been up there today or tomorrow. They rush. Okay, good, everything, I talked to them this morning, they said everything looks good. So that's progressing forward. And we'll be getting with John here over the next week or two to, to begin the, the drawdown testing at the two pump stations. So we're on schedule and collecting data as we speak.
So when do we have just an estimated date to have this data so we'll know what the I-N-I is?
Probably, let's see, they're calling for quite a bit of rain toward the end of next week, so maybe in the next two and a half weeks, that would give us time to collect that rain data next week. Do the next, collect the following week, and then give us a couple of days to give a preliminary review of what we've seen so far. So maybe two and a half weeks, two and a half, three weeks.
Sam, I'm gonna refer to you because we know we're dealing with a lot of different situations. We have someone with a hand raised, but right now, we're not at that point. Is it okay if we deal, if we address that, when we get down just a little bit, or should we do it now?
No, it's, it's time to, I mean, you do your business and then you can accept citizen comments.
Okay, so please keep your hand up, we will get to it soon. Okay. All right, does anyone, Counsel, have anything for John or for Travis?
No.
Nate?
Nope.
Jessica?
Moving forward.
Doreen?
No.
I know. Thanks, guys, we appreciate. Hey, John, will you stick around for a little while?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go back to Street Department. Keith, are you here?
You might need unmuting.
Okay, can somebody who's checking unmuting do that, please?
I think it's Keith's iPad.
Yeah. Got me?
Got you. Can't see you, but we got you.
Okay, that's probably a good thing.
How are the Street Department's going, sir?
Uh, pretty good. Started, uh, we got some cold mix today, started patching some holes, trying to take care of some of that. And the, on First Street, the issue that Nate had with road washing.
Yeah.
Found two pieces of, it's a thirty-inch covert, and we found those today. And we'll try to get started on that next week.
So you're gonna dig the covert up and replace it or put a length in it?
No, no, it just needs added on to the, added on to the end of it. And widen that road out, you know, where it's washing.
Perfect. And I saw y'all put some rock out there on the, on the road going to the water tower, too.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we did that. We still, we've not got to finish that, because it's just been so wet. And really, last week, you know, limbs out of the road and stuff like that, it was a, it was a pretty big deal, so that's kept us pretty busy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid codes enforcement officers gonna come by my house before I get all the limbs out of my yard now.
Yeah, there was a question today about that, some people calling to know, you know, if they put their limbs outside of the road, would we haul them off? And we, we don't, we can't go do, clean, we can't go clean everybody's yard up, you know.
Well, you never have, have you, Keith? I mean, of course, that's something we're gonna deal with before too long, too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it's stuff we've cut up, you know, that's been across the road, yes, we'll go back and clean it up. But as far as picking up stuff, you know, when people drags it outside of the road, yeah, we don't, we don't have the time or manpower for that.
But they can, they can take it to the, the Convenience Center in Montego, is that right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, we always take care of it when it gets there. But other than that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's all I've got.
That's limbs, that's not anything else as far as, it's not building materials or anything like that, just.
Right, yeah, just where, just where the ice has broken limbs out, you know, and stuff like that.
And why you bring up Convenience Center? We can note this, I think the Council's aware of it. Both Saturday, well, Saturday, there was a misunderstanding with the contact. Both Saturday, well, Saturday, uh, there was a misunderstanding with the compactor being full, so that was taken care of. Joe came up. I called, um, Keith, was it six thirty, seven thirty? I don't know, six thirty went in this morning. We earlier this morning and I actually started calling seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock. The compactor was full. So that is handled by Marion County. So I did call Marion County and the individual that does their pickups. Got sick toward the end of the week and was put in the hospital. It's either cancer or heart attack, I wasn't sure, but he was in the hospital. Uh, so there was no one that picked up, so their schedule got off. I did speak with David, um, Mayor Jackson. He did call me, I think, around nine. Uh, he did, we were not scheduled till tomorrow, but I told him I didn't think that was good work. And he had someone up here, I, I'm not sure, do you know what time it was, Keith, that um?
I think it was around two or something like that, maybe.
That they did come and pick up the uh, trash that was in the compactor. But that is beyond their control. It is a Marion County pickup. And that is what happened and nobody knew it till this morning, you know, that it was not, it wasn't done. And that the individual got sick and they had a contractor doing it. So that's what happened, the reason there was a temporary shutdown in the convenience center. Which, uh, council, we start working in our budget. Uh, and we do need to start scheduling those things. What are we doing today or, you know, do them at another date? But we need to start having budget meetings as um, that is something we're gonna have to address, as well as several other items that are on our budget that we need to look at. Is that correct, Keith or John? Uh, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
I don't either. No, I don't.
So, council?
Keith, you do know it is start, supposed to start raining Thursday for about seven straight days.
Alright, then I'll wear my raincoat.
Put your waders on.
Yeah, it'd take me a long time to melt.
Alvin?
No, I don't have anything.
Well, while we're on the budget, did anybody have an objection to just going ahead and scheduling a budget meeting? Our first budget meeting, the Monday before our um, workshop? That way we can just go get that process rolling?
Can we do that down here in new business? So we're, since we're.
Okay, okay.
If you don't mind, I'd rather do that, since we've got several things, we've gotta make sure that we're.
Feeble mind to remember it, but I'll try.
We'll make a note here, Nate, week before, week before the meeting. Okay. Jessica?
I have no questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you on the hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, oh, business is the second reading of ordinance zero four two one, occupational safety. Zero four two one. Oh, wait a minute. Well, go ahead. We're gonna do this one prior summer, follow the order. We got Earl here, but he's not on here right now. Ordinance to establish and update occupational safety and health program plan, devise rules and regulations provide for a safety director and the implementation of such a program and plan. Whereas in the compliance of public chapter five, six, one of the general assembly of the state of Tennessee for the year of nineteen seventy-two and the city of and county of Mont Eagle. Hereby updates the occupational safety health, health program plan for air employees for the town of Mont Eagle and for the count, by the council. So, do I hear? This is the second reading on ordinance zero four one two, occupational safety. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I have second.
Roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Okay, um, next, um, new business. Then we have business permits. There is one business permit in your packet. Earl, you're here, but do you have anything? Um, we'll just go ahead and let you report on the business permit and the owners here, so.
Yeah, this, uh, local bar and grill, uh, Dean Gibson, I did the, I approved the uh, the business permit, life safety issues, um, two, three, twenty-one. And I should have, you should have a copy of that that I have signed. And also, I did a certificate of occupancy for the same structure uh, for their alcohol licensing. I bought, I did that for them also. So I would ask for approval of their business permit.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have second.
We do have Bo, are you here tonight for your dad?
Yeah, finally.
Does anyone have any questions for Bo before that we vote?
Are you close to opening?
We are close.
How close?
I mean, whenever y'all gives approval.
Okay, does that, anyone else have any questions or comments for Bo?
Forward to it.
There's, there's his dad. There's Dane. Are you feeling better, Dane?
A lot better.
Glad you're here.
Good.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Doreen?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Welcome aboard. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to refer to um, our attorney here before we start what we're doing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Earl, this, I've got three more zoning issues that need to be brought up to the board.
All right, go ahead.
I need some direction on, on some of those. Uh, on one and seven twenty-one, I went and looked at a cabin, about a twelve to sixteen cabin that was being built on Central Street, which is part of Campbell subdivision. Uh, no, they had no permit, number one, and number two, uh, it's one of those type structures that it doesn't meet the minimum square footage to be a residence. Uh, I found the owner, talked to him, uh, Troy Rollins. And he, he was under the understanding that it was not in the city limits. He thought the city limits was in the middle of Central Avenue, when, but they do border the backside of his property all the way up that street, anyway. Uh, I've talked with Sam about it, trying to get some, some uh, re- resolution. And I, I need you guys to kinda give me some direction on which, which way to go. Sam advises to just give him thirty days to have it moved or torn down. And I, you know, I just, I just need to, there is any, any other options out there, I just need to know what we need to do. It's a noncon, it's certainly nonconforming use. I placed a top work order on it. Also advised Mr. Rollins that it wasn't the type of structure that could be put in that R one residential district.
Well, we've heard of Sam before we even discussed it ourselves, since it was not on the agenda, and we'll clarify that, which that's, it's with codes enforcement, we've gotta see that side of it take on here. But Sam, uh, since you are her expert on this and you've made it, Earl's discussed it to you, could you give us your opinion?
Well, I mean, the, the bottom line is, it's not only, it not only meets this, fails to meet the square footage for your residential area, but it's, it's not an appropriate structure for that. Uh, that, that's not zoned for that correctly, correct, Earl?
That's correct, yeah.
And, and so unless y'all are inclined to change the zoning on that tract, which would be a, you know, you know what it is to rezone and everything. I mean, you've got, you've got a law that you've got to enforce. And, and usually what we do, and I, I heard your codes enforcement person say that, what we're trying to do, or your police officer say that, you know, you try to get people to voluntarily comply without having to bring uh, uh, complaints against them in city court and that sort of thing. So that's why I suggested to Earl to give him some time to, to move it or to tear it down before we did it took any action. And that's still my recommendation.
Earl, I, I, I haven't talked to Troy, but I, I understand from his brother that it was kinda intended to be temporary until they built their real house on that property. It, does it?
That wasn't what I was told. Uh, and if, if that is the situation, there is something in the zoning ordinance for a temporary structure and you give them so many days, you know, that you can. But he still, even at that rate, even for temporary, it, you know, it'd be up, to me, it'd be more like a RV or something like that. It's just a small twelve to sixteen, one room. Uh, but, you know, if that's, I, I do what you guys want me to do. I just consider that be a nonconforming use and we just need to take some action.
What, what I'm curious about is, um, would it work as a shed? If he were building a house, would it qualify as an outbuilding, as an a pertinent a structure to a conforming building within R one? And could we just say, hey, because I, I rode by and looked at it, it doesn't have any windows. I mean, it's hardly a house.
Right.
Could it, could it just be a shed and have him get a permit to build a real house as part of?
One of the op, one of the options that I had considered and thought about was doing this, that particular thing. If it's just gonna be an accessory structure to a, to an R one residence, uh, that, that, that would, it would work for that.
Can't live in it, right?
But he can't live in it.
Right, right.
I mean, you were saying a shed, Nate, so, I mean, I'm just asking a question. We're talking about living residence right now is what Sam said, that it was nonconforming, so.
Well, I just drove by and looked at it. It didn't have any windows that I could see. It was just a door and it, it looked like a shed.
Yeah, I went by there and looked too. It's a, it, I mean, it's a shed, but I didn't know, my first thought was, cause over to the left right of it, you can see where he's cleaned out for a foundation. So I thought, well, maybe he's building a house. I don't know.
Well, also, there's a power pole there with a meter base on it, in that, you know, out there in that field. Uh, but, you know, if that would work for me, you tell me what we need to do, if we need to get him to sign some paperwork, that here's what this is gonna be, or what we need to do. Cause we've done that in the past, you know, for some, a property on Wells Road that uh, was confusion about zoning. We went through the Board of Zoning Appeals and he, he signs some paperwork.
Where's the city limits, did you say?
They run the backside of that property all the way up central, all the way to, to the road there.
So he's not in city or he is?
He is in the city. His property is the last property in the city on the backside.
Sam, what's your recommendation?
I do, I gave, I mean, i- i- if you can make it in a, a accessory structure to something that he expects to build, that's fine. Or if it's just a shed. Uh, you know, I, I, I don't, I guess a shed that someone that doesn't live in is okay there, isn't it, Earl?
It is, yeah, it'd be some outbuilding or accessory structure to the main structure.
But, but I mean.
Storage.
But, but if, I mean, if somebody resides in it, then it's, then it's not a proper.
And I don't, I don't think he's living there now. He's just in the process of construction.
He's living in Chattanooga. He's living in Chattanooga. My understanding is he and his new wife are discussing the uh, house design, so I, I don't mean to.
I, hey, that works great for me. If that's, just leave it like it is and, or do we, do we need to have a paperwork signed that here's what the deal is or what?
Would he need your permit for that shed?
He wouldn't need a permit for an outbuilding.
What, what would happen if we, um, if we gave him some paperwork that, that simply said, that is a shed and it is not to be lived in? And give him a timeline where he can get a building permit on a regular building?
Sounds good to me.
Sam, would that work under this? And we're trying not, you know, it was, could you draw up an agreement that it is a shed and it won't be lived in?
I can, but it looks to me, Earl says he's done that before. I mean.
Well, Earl, can you do it?
No, I didn't do it before. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Nate was there.
Yeah, I think I was the president bu- of the B C A at that point.
Yeah, I think Nate'd be a good man to draw it up.
If you wanna draw it up and send it to me and let me polish it up, that would be great.
I'll do that. So I guess I need clarity from the board. Do we wanna put a timeline on when he would break ground? Or do we just wanna simply say it's not to be lived in, it's an accessory structure?
It can't be.
Period.
Yeah. So we don't need to tie it to any future building permit? We just say, guess what, that's a shed and you'll not to live in it?
If he wants to apply to make it a temporary structure while he builds, he can do that. But right now, all we're doing is reacting to a, to a, a structure that looks like it's intended to be a very small residence. And, and we're letting him know that that's not possible.
Yeah, and, and Mayor, we, I have concerns about letting him use it as a temporary structure. I think I'd rather have him bring in an RV or something like that, because once you put a toilet in your out, in your outbuilding, it's a, it's a fancy outbuilding permanently. Can't take it back.
So it's gonna be, the agreement's gonna say it's a shed and it's not gonna be lived in. And you're gonna send that to Sam and he's gonna review it. And then once Earl gets it signed off, is this what we're discussing here? So Debbie's got it for the minutes. So I mean, gonna make a motion here was, if we're going to, right, Sam, we would have to make a motion in a second to go this round. I'm just.
Well, I mean, it's a, it, I, I think that, uh, Earl, do you need particular direction from them? Or is just understanding what uh, what your plan is okay for them?
Well, I think you need to take action because Troy still telling me, he never knew it was in the city limits and still says he's got maps that show it's not the city limits. And uh, you know, I, I've looked back through every map I've ever had from Mont Eagle and it's always been.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's have a motion then to uh, to inform him in writing uh, that uh, that this is a, a, a shed that, that is not to be lived in. And um, and have him agree to it in, uh, by signing off on that.
And that way it doesn't have to be removed. It can be used as now, as a.
Right.
Rip. Okay. All right, we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, I guess, since I'm drafting it.
Sorry.
And you're going to send it to Sam for him to review and then we'll, we'll have it.
So the motion will be to um, allow Troy Rollins to keep that current structure as an accessory outbuilding structure only. And um, I guess forbid him to, to use it as a residence.
Right.
Okay.
So, did you make the motion? Alvin, did you second it? Or did I'm here, did somebody else second it?
Nate, I think Nate made it. Did you make it, Nate? I'll second. It don't matter. Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay.
Okay, uh, I tend to, you don't have a whole lot, but actually tonight I've got two more zoning issues. I'm already on the right side of the road between Tracy and Mont Eagle, building owned by Claude Hoback. Address is actually U S forty-one, one oh two, one eight. Used to be a beauty shop years ago. It's in a commercial district, C, that's a C two up through there. And a gentleman has had, wanted, required about having the water turned on, says he's gonna live there. And uh, of course, you know, it's, when you think, you can't have a residence in a commercial district as that is. He's already put, and I went up there and actually went up there and looked at, he's already got signs put out, uh, some kind of a. And I'm sure y'all, most of y'all, I mean, anywhere you go, you can see it, they signs out. And I've talked to him once and I told him then you had to have a business permit or we could do anything else. And I'm not sure that he's even turned one of those in yet. That's been over a week ago or maybe a week back. Uh, and he, I mean, I checked it out. There is plates on the tables in there. There is barbecue grills around the back. I mean, and the guy, I think, I think he's living there, just to be honest with you. So, I need to find out what we need to do. Uh, I can't go up there and sit in the parking lot. He comes in at night, go to bed, you know, I, but we need to figure out what needs to happen there.
Are you talking that?
He also talked to me about putting in a, said he wanna put a shower in, kitchen in, blah, blah, blah. And I said, hey, maybe you can't do it, it's a commercial zone. Well, he says his, his wife is in some health issues. While they're having that business there during the day, if she needed to lay down or fix something, he's like. I, I, I'm not comfortable with, uh, with signing a building permit for any of that, to be honest with you.
Are you talking about Sharon's old beauty shop?
That's it.
So is it, is it, is he living in? I mean, is he wanting to live in it or is he gonna build a business, put a business in?
No, he, he's got a business. He, he's already got a business there, but uh, I've advised him, put a note on the door and talked to him on the phone and told him until he had a business permit that he, he couldn't live, he couldn't even open the business up. He's already got signs out. He's got, already put an outbuilding on the outside.
What kind of business is it?
Uh, outpost, I've seen. He said it's gonna be a, uh, outdoor flea market. That's what's, what my understanding.
Putting the cart before the horse, Sydney.
Well, that's what I kinda thought and, uh, uh, I'm just, you know, I don't really know what to do. I've, uh, as soon as he gets a business permit application turned in, I mean, I'll deal further, further with that, but I just want y'all to know that I, I'm not comfortable with it.
Have you turned on the water yet, Earl?
Oh, water, water has not been turned on until I get a business permit. It will not be.
Yeah, I wouldn't turn on the water till I get it cleared up.
I, I, I believe he's still living there. But anyway. So just, just, probably no action needs to be taken right now, but I just want y'all to be aware of, of that, that's what I'm, I'm leaving.
I just took with, with town hall and there has been no business turn, permit turned in for that location.
Uh, I mean, I, I, I don't really know what to do then.
You might, you might send a police officer by there after hours to see if there's anybody in there.
But I tell you, I'll talk with Jack about that. He and I'll work that out. And, and nothing else. I, I appreciate what Jack's doing. And there's times that even with this guy right here, uh, he just needs to go up there and be cited to court. For not having a business permit and for the actions of possibly living in that house, that building. And then if he, and then there again, you know, if he gives all that up, he can just drop the case before it goes forward, judge. There's just times that I just, there's just so much I can do. Even though I know it's wrong, I, I, I think find any way to remedy the situation, in other words, but police officer can.
Right. Jackie, Jackie is doing it now that you explained that to me and he's been going. That's where he had five citations this month, so.
Anyway.
I've, I've, I've ever lived in this place?
I'm sorry?
You said Jack had five citations because of it? Was it in from at this place? No, remember he said he had five citations and, and Nate asked him what they were, or he said five of those citations is what he had.
They were property maintenance issues.
But they weren't at this place, okay? No, no, no. Okay.
But I, I'll, you know, I'll get with Jack on that. He can help me with this. He'll help me tremendously. I got one more, one more thing and then I'll be done. There is a manufactured home at 12 Payne Avenue. That's right behind, well, it's right where Billy Joe Lockhart used to have that restaurant. And I think at one time that building, if you shot this, but all that's been torn down, but they said somewhere along the line years ago, there's a double wide manufactured home got in there and that's there again. It's a res, it's a commercial zone. The zone, you know, for nobody living there, but it's right now it's being used as a rental, a rental house. I have talked to the owner, uh, and I went by there and they were building a, a, a accessory structure in the back and they're also doing their front, redoing their front porch. When you have a nonconforming use, you can't make any modifications, uh, to it unless it's something strictly to do with maintenance. So neither one of those actually were. And I talked to the owner. She lives in Nashville. And I, I gave her two options. Number one would be go have it rezoned some way or another to a residential instead of commercial. Uh, or, uh, she's gonna have to move. So, well, she, I got an email from her this morning and it says, Mr. Gary, I've decided I'm going to sell it and it's gonna be moved out of the property. So.
Good.
That is probably a good solution to that, to that deal.
That's a great solution.
So will the property go back to commercial? Cause it was never zoned to residence?
It, it never was residence.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. But you said under that situation, it had been there, so we would have to let that stay until they had sold it or moved it. So if they move it, then it'll just be resident, it'll be commercial or residential.
That is true. And she owns a lot right in front of it too. And her, and she, she, we talked about, she's got some good ideas really about things to put, businesses to put there. That would be, it would be properly zoned for her. So worked out good.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Unless somebody has something for me.
Well, hang around there. We got a couple more things we gotta do. We may have questions. Earl, what's going in to the old pit stop?
The old pit stop?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Where is that at?
Yeah, it was Spady Sack, the old pit stop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that guy. Yeah, I've got a permit on him. He told me the permit is for a, uh, a place where people get off the interstate and run the op, that could be like several office desks in there with wifi and all that. Where if somebody had, need to get off the interstate, they'd have a place to go to, uh, to communicate, you know, with, uh, uh, other people, you know, with the wifi and having a little office space there. That was, that was my understanding. And that's been, gosh, it's been, oh, six or eight months ago when that project started. I feel, we're just piddling around right now. That's what it is.
All right. Does anyone have anything for Earl? The sons? Anything else for Earl?
Good job, Earl.
Jessica?
No, I don't.
Nate?
Thanks.
Appreciate you, Earl. Okay.
I do have one more question, cause, um, I, I had a neighbor in the Campbell subdivision ask me about the, uh, the single wide that was gonna get moved. Is that, is that still on tap to be moved?
Absolutely. It's not gone yet. It's Mr. Elisa, uh, Powell, Powell, what was her name? Anyway, yeah. And, uh, it never was, it was just backed in there. And according to her, they were waiting on the weather to get better for the mover to come and pick it back up. Just to be pulled out. I thought it may have already been done, but maybe not.
Well, I, I had talked to her and she'd said the same thing. And that's what I told the neighbor. I just didn't know whether you, whether there was a timeline on your notice to have it moved it or whether y'all were in communication. I was just curious.
Yeah, she, yeah, she'd been very good to tell me and tell me that, you know, they're gonna go next week. You know, the weather breaks and it rains again. And anyway, it's, it's going away.
Yeah, well, I, I, it has not been easy to, to do anything other than play in the mud.
That's true.
Anything else for all folks?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the next business. Let me check one thing. Hey, Dan, can you give me the date of the foreign letter, please? I'm going to refer to Sam here because we did get some emails. We did get some information today and Sam, correct me, but since you are an attorney as we begin this, there was a question of how we handle, um, our citizens hearing according to code. Uh, I know there's Robert Drew's order and there's also code. So what, um, I'm going to do is do a roll call. So we've got it. Okay. And then I've got a couple of notes before we start citizens hearing, if we decide to do it before we address ordinances, okay? It's a little out of order where Robert's rules of order, but there's a reason for this. I think I did forward. I didn't get it till this afternoon. Some of the emails to you, the packet for the council up here, but I'll address those as we go. So Sam, correct me anytime that I may be speaking incorrectly. But, uh, first and foremost, if we want to, let's move the citizens comments up to the new business before we read the ordinance. This first reading of ordinance zero five dash two one, which would are, would be RBT property. And of course we will do one with each one of these if we choose to do that, okay? So I'm going to, for a motion.
Understanding that the actual public hearing's next time.
Yes.
But, but, but you are letting citizens comment on it, uh, prior to taking action on it by, by someone making a motion to move, uh, citizens comments up to the current place in the agenda and, uh, letting people comment for the three minutes that you normally allow.
Correct. So do we have a motion to, to move the citizens' comments? Which will be time, Nate, you're gonna do that tonight. As we do that, you said to be prepared to do that. But do we wanna move that before we deal with any of the ordinances tonight? So do we have a motion to maybe citizens comments up to that point?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Myself is yes. Okay, before we start, Nate, I know we had a hand raised a while ago, but what we're, before we start even here opening citizens hearings, um, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna note this for the record. There's two things I wanna note here. Uh, of course, you know, it'll be later on in our agenda. If we approve an amount for a web designer, which will get our information online. But today I did note that some of the attachments were not included. And I mentioned that to Sam.
On the previous minutes.
Yes, and those will be added once we get a new web designer and all that's updated today, okay? But the former one did not put the attachments or those mentions of addendums were not included. So that's an error and it was not intentional. But we will make that correction once we get a new web designer. Sam, correct me if I'm wrong. I wanna note this. On February the second, two thousand, uh, twenty-one from a Mrs. Jen Bowe, Bowling that we received, and it was received at town hall, a letter with her concerns that, uh, for public record, on two seventeen twenty-one, it's a two-page letter to myself and the council concerning, she's writing about the petro development, her concerns, her issues and her recommendations if it is pursued. This will be here at town hall. And it will also be included as an attachment once we get any web designer in tonight's minutes, okay? As well as the other ones will be corrected. Also, and I'll have to look on the email. I think it was three thirty-two today. Then I forwarded it to you guys. We received a document. I don't know to everybody, their email. I know you didn't get to pick up your package cause you're at home. And I think it was Mary Beth Best, and it was received this afternoon. It is a stop the truck stop in Montegoal with comments. Uh, it says, "I am in full support of spotted economic growth and development of the town of Montegoal. I do not support the truck class being built on Trussell Road, Stampley Road, Dixie Lee, encroaching upon already existing residential areas too close to children's ball parks." It says, "Montegoal Town Council must vote on the development." It is a printout. It looks like there's thirteen pages. I don't have the email. Does anybody have their email pulled up? Cause I think there's something else in the email that I forwarded to you. There is comments, uh, it has been reviewed here. I think there says, Doreen, did you count the signatures? Did you say that?
I did. I got forty-five.
You got forty-five, even though there's more than that in comments and they're from different areas, from Montegoal, from, if, I don't know, from residents, from people that live there, from different areas as well. But Sam, correct me if I'm right or wrong. This is thirteen pages here. That will also be made as part of the minutes, as an addendum or an attachment. Is this how I handle this tonight without reviewing?
Correct.
Oh, sorry. It's eighteen pages. Mary Beth, I did just see that. It's eighteen pages total. So that will be included as well as in the back, there are signature pages as well as emails. So is this being handled properly, Sam?
Yes, correct. Correct. You're not, you've noted it on the record that it's been received, Madam Mayor.
The other thing, Sam, while we're talking about receiving documents for clarification, Sam, uh, as I stated, which has been challenged, I did not realize we had a certified letter, but we did note an email that was received. Please mention the correct number of signatures. Uh, I didn't count those. Will somebody count the signatures, please? Uh, that are in the back.
There must've been an issue with the digital copy because I only counted forty-five as well. And I, I reached out to Mary Beth and she said there were two hundred and eighteen. Um, but I, I couldn't ever get it to come up. And I don't know whether it was how the scanner went or how, how my program opened it.
I only got forty-five, Nate.
I didn't change anything. This is exactly what you received, what I received, what everybody received, so.
No, no, I, I don't, I think it, I think it's just something with how my computer opened the scan. But I could, I think there were pages missing, maybe even pages off the back. I had some blank pages at the end of the, the, the document that began with Jim Waller, uh, presentation.
I've got one that has fifteen signatures from people here. Um, I have one that has thirteen. I have one that has eight and I have one that has nine. So there's four separate pages. It has different numbers on it. So, but I mean, you received what I did via email and the packets were here and you were aware of it. So, and I asked Sam how to address this. So Sam, that's how you said to address it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So also, Sam, while we're discussing letters received, which has been challenged, we did not receive, that is incorrect, Mary Beth says. So I don't know what she said. We'll, we'll get to citizens hearing in just a minute. But you received, I received an email and sent it to you. It was in question, an email that you and Earl had reviewed from Mr. Best. Uh, I did not realize it was certified.
Well, it was, it was, uh, we received a letter that was, uh, signed by Mr. Best and several other of the residents there making complaints about, uh, one of the truck stops. And Earl and I went through the citations and the various issues that were resolved. And I composed a response letter, which I believe the council was copied on.
And you did send that to Mr. Best, you said?
Yes.
Correct. And that was never held from that date from you received it from the email. I mean, I didn't know it's certified and none of the council did. We did later find out and I have made sure it has been addressed in this office. If they receive certified, it will be known and we will know that. So all we can do is correct that error. You know, that did happen. Uh, Sam, while we're discussing this, also the issue of fines that was received from us, will you please let the council know what you did with that, that?
Oh, uh, the, uh, the citation, uh, where we had the court judgment?
Yes.
Yeah, again, uh, I, I think each of you received a letter, a demand letter that I sent to Mr. Kilgore relative to the, uh, court citation that was entered against him in twenty seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, or twenty eighteen, excuse me, in twenty eighteen. Uh, and I gave him a certain amount of time, I think, to the, uh, first week of March to come to the town hall and pay that fine. Otherwise, uh, um, based on the mayor's direction, I'll proceed to make a tentative collection proceedings.
What was the amount that you did determine based upon Mr. Raines' fine when the ordinance was done? Cause this was nothing to do with us, but we gave you the files that we received from Mr. Cameron.
Forty-nine hundred dollars, fifty dollars a day for what, ninety-eight days or something like that.
We just sent you everything that Mr. Cameron sent us and every fine that could be found. And, uh, we'll deal with this one in March as well. Cause Jack Hill will report on that. So I just wanted the council to know, have y'all received that information?
We did.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Sam before we move into citizens comments? Cause we wanna handle this as best as we can.
So he, he has until the date, uh, indicated, which I think you're right, it's the first week of March. And then it'll be turned over to city court? Or what, what happens then?
I, I think the thing to do would be to go to Jasper and file a, a collection action in Sessions Court. Uh, because then we can issue garnishments and things of that nature. And that, and actually that's a little bit easier for me to operate in Jasper than it is to come up there.
Okay.
Can you check if we got a fire? We got a fire alarm going off. Y'all go ahead. If we have to step out, we will. We'll let you know. But, um, y'all continue with the meeting. Uh, Nate, if you wanna go ahead and start the process, I think we have one hand raised and.
I'd like to ask a question.
Sorry, okay.
Uh, Sam, there, there are people that have heard that the amount of the fine was in excess of thirty thousand dollars. Can you clarify that?
The, the judgment that Judge Raines entered was, uh, for so many days. And, and, uh, I assume, from what I have heard, Mr. Kilgore extended past that number of days. But I don't have that reduced to a judgment, Jessica. What I have written on paper by the judge is that ninety-eight days. And so that's what I'm proceeding with is with the ninety-eight days. You know, it's been, you know, it's been almost three years since that occurred. And, um, I've gotta go with what's solid as opposed to, you know, I, I don't know how many more days he, he extended past the date of the judgment. To tell you the truth, no one's told me that. So what I've got is written on that paper and that's what I think is the safest thing after three years to try to collect.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Sam, there's another thing we do want you to do. And I mentioned this, we do have a document from both Clark and Cameron. And we also have a document from Debbie that said it was not perceived in court based up on the information they were told not to pursue. I bet that, we did ask Mr. Bible the same thing verbally. He said that. I want you to send Mr. Bible a. I want you to send Mr. Bible a, because he's the one that sent us those letters, why he did not pursue that court if it was outstanding. Can you do that on the back of the tape?
I will, I will do something of that nature. I probably would be a little less formal with Mr. Bible as a fellow lawyer. But I will try to get that cleared up for you, Mayor.
Well, I mean, we need to clear it up for the people, because obviously, there's a question there. We don't know anything about it, and we sure are hugged it, but let's just clear that up while we're dealing with it. You know, so, and gone from there.
We got it.
All right, are we ready to start, Nate? You can go ahead, somebody had their hand raised, so if you want to start with a hand raising, then you start your timer.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is let people introduce themselves and I'll start the timer after they've introduced themselves.
Okay. I think Mary Beth has her hand raised, as I want to see. Nate, for you.
Well, I'm, she has not been unmuted yet, or did somebody else?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I guess we're not doing video? There we go. We're good, so thank you, Nate. My name is Mary Beth Best, I live at 521 Lockson House Place in Montego. I have two items I want to bring up tonight, but first, the petition. You have a petition with 218 signatures, and I would like that corrected in minutes. I did make a mistake and send the wrong PDF, but all of you have been sent the correct PDF. Plus, what Marilyn held up was an envelope with a paper copy. If you'll look on page seven, you will see that there are 172 signatures on the first page, on the first petition. And then there are more signatures that equal 218. They are authentic signatures for people that own property and are affected by the possibility of the truck stop being built in town. So I would like that corrected in the minutes.
Wait a minute, Mary Beth, before you go, Nate, you can see what I've got. Nate, show them.
The envelope, and I put a 218 signatures in this envelope. So if it's, and you have an email that will also, you can look at the email, I did send the wrong thing on the PDF, but you all have the correct set of petitions. If you don't have it, I'm going to bring it to you again tomorrow. I personally made the copies of it, and I will be glad to make more copies. But I have signatures, and that's how many we have so far. It is an active petition and it's still in rotation, and we'll present additional signatures as they are correct. The second thing that I would like to bring up is we are talking about the current property at that, of the RBT process. And you mentioned that the fines are being taken care of whenever, but I want the code enforcer to look now. No hints whatsoever around the property, it's probably been about six days. And we're doing a lot of work, and Earl's doing a lot of work in the community, and I would like to have that in the minutes, that I recommend that we take a look at that. It is out of ordinance now, it is in violation of our current city ordinances now. So there should be more attention given to that property as it sits. And that's all I got tonight.
Thanks. Earl, have you been out and looked at it? Do you, do you know what?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the question is.
She was indicating that she felt like there was something out of compliance on.
There is no fence around the Montego Truck Repair at Foresight and Trample and Trussell. It has been taken down, the dilapidated fence that was not in, or in, that was not in compliance to begin with, has completely been taken down. So there's no fencing around that commercial property. And I would like to request that if you've taken a look at.
Okay, I will take care of that, that's probably, that's going to be a property maintenance issue. Jack and I will look at that.
Thank you. And one other thing I'd like to say is I do appreciate the exchange that I've had with the aldermen this week. I know this is a difficult time and we're talking about difficult issues, but I do appreciate the conversation, it's really, really important, and I do appreciate it.
Thanks. Eight seconds to spare.
I'd like to say something else again if I can.
Sure.
This time in my, in a different role. If you do or don't know, my name is Chastity Mountain, and I am also the coordinator of the Grundy Safe Communities Coalition, which is our drug and alcohol prevention coalition in Grundy County. And I just wanted to come to you all and make you aware, you know, that we exist and that we are here to help with anything that we can, prevention-related. So whether that be signage in any of our businesses, or our parks, or anything that we can do to help with that, as well as Narcan trainings, or anything, you know, anything drug and alcohol related, as far as prevention goes. So I would love to come and be a part of the Easter egg hunt and the Fourth of July festivities. I really would, I want to get in the loop with this group here, as far as my actual job goes. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate?
Well, so I guess, are we looking for other people to raise their hands? I haven't seen any other.
Yep.
Casey Reed in the chat box is saying she cannot get on. Casey, are you trying to, would you like to make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, well, why don't you, I've introduced you, but go ahead, you introduce yourself and we can, go for it.
I'm not, I'm not getting it, hold on a second, start my video there, okay, sorry, there we are. I want to ask a question to the council. And Counselor Sam, I, this is, this is going to be a yes or no question, okay? I've done some due diligence on Truck Stops of America. And my question to the council, and this is yes or no. Forget RBT, I'm talking to the council. Has the council done, performed any due diligence on Truck Stops of America, the franchise? Yes or no?
I have investigated them, yes, I have looked at them, yes.
Okay, what is their rating? What is their stock, what is their stock? Pardon me?
I do not know that.
Well, then you haven't investigated it.
Well, I have, I have Googled them, let me say that.
Okay, so that's your due diligence, is Googling Truck Stops of America? Seriously? And you're a council person?
Yeah, pretty much.
Wow, that just speaks volumes, volumes. I'm sorry, guys, it just does. I don't even know what else to say. I'm stunned, because I really thought I would get a better answer. So, this is, this is amazing, I don't even know what to say. I would suggest that the council, the city council, the planning commission, and the city attorney perform some due diligence. You guys have put the, you talked about, Doreen, you talked about putting the cart before the horse. Well, this is exactly what's happening right here. You guys have put the cart before the horse. I've also done some research that is continuing about wells being underneath this 22-plus acres. Also, possible contamination of Cave Code Creek from the runoff. We have videos. The EPA is interested in this. And, you know, I really think that we, we need to stop here and make sure of what's happening and make sure that the community and the citizens and the property values and the health of everybody is not compromised.
Thanks for your comments.
Oh, sorry, time up, sorry, thank you, thank you for listening.
Do we have any other comments? Somebody want to either raise their hand or?
And council members, since this is citizens' comments, they can also have comments about something other than the rezoning, too.
Yes, and thank you, Chastie, for making us aware. I did, I was not aware that that was what you did, it's an important service. I just re-upped my first responder training and I'm old enough that I did not have Narcan training the last time I did it, and it was kind of an eye-opener.
Chastie could be a real accident.
I don't see any other comments.
Nate, I do want to ask you to speak to the well, because that's been brought up a couple of times. I know that you had mentioned that, I had asked you about that, and you had mentioned something about a spring there. Do you have any information?
I don't have any, any information on it that is definite. You know, we have been told that there were some artesian wells there. I don't, that's not typically a formation associated with the top of the mountain. I don't know what it was, there could very well be some wet weather spring or something there, I don't, I don't know.
When was this covered, as far as this? Do y'all recall, Earl, do you, do you recall whenever this was covered? If this did occur with this well?
I've heard, I've heard people talk about it, but I don't know where it is.
My point being, was.
It doesn't matter what we say or do, it's still my contention. And there again, I don't care where the truck goes, goes in there or not. But I know engineering was done by an engineering firm that did the site plan, and I am positive sure that whatever, anything in there that would have been unfavorable or the site plan they were going to produce was covered. And that would be my thoughts. Anyway, I never did know where it was at, but I have heard, I've heard that rumor.
Okay, and when would that have been covered, is what I'm getting at, Earl? Because we've only been here, and Lucy Kiebles holding her hand up, Nate, so, well, when was, when was that covered? Because that was already done when we took office in November, so was that done last year?
It was, probably been six, eight months ago, you know, from the beginning, when the first site plan started showing up at the planning commission. You had a design professional come in, an engineer that came in and developed the site plan. And I would have thought that if there was any kind, anything there that would have been EPA or anything else, that that would have come up during that process of developing the site plan. So, it's, you know, and a lot, you know, there's been, a site plan was produced, and you guys, the new planning commission hasn't, probably hasn't seen this, the latest version that we saw back, you know, in October, November of last year. Which has a lot of things on it that y'all, all about the fence, yeah, the fence is on there. I mean, there's a lot of things that the new planning commission hasn't, hadn't been privy, the things that were already, you know, it's already looked at.
Nate, I think you have a hand raised there, if you want to go ahead and.
Yeah, and I also, I actually have some of those plans up on the computer, so I can share them if we have some specific questions, but Lucy, you want to go ahead?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, guys. Well, I think, I think the confusion about whether there's artesian wells there or not just kind of brings up the point of needing to do thorough testing. You probably are aware that when you get your stormwater, you know, your runoff permit from TDEC, it's kind of a bond between TDEC and developers, right? So the developers sign an agreement with TDEC that they will honor what TDEC asked them to honor. But TDEC is not a watchdog organization, they don't come out and do this. So it seems that before fast-tracking anything on top of artesian wells, part of the aquifer that runs along the top of the mountain. I know that, I've heard that, that wells were drilled all along where the railroad was at one time to supply drinking water. But we've got lots of artesian wells, I believe, Nate, and lots of sinkholes. So groundwater pollution, it seems to me that any sort of petroleum distillates, a toxic spill, just gas from a pump, you know, gas pump handle, engine oil, whatever could actually get in our groundwater. And I'm a Flint, Michigan, that we just need to take our time and really check these things out and make sure that this community is not going to be polluted by ongoing groundwater toxicity.
So I'm wondering if maybe there's a term issue, because I'm certainly not aware of any artesian wells on the mountain, and artesian well, in my understanding, and I'm not a geologist, is when you have water, you have surface water higher in the watershed, that because of the gravity pressure as it goes subsurface, it then comes up to the surface with some pressure. This location is the, really the top of the watershed, so I don't, I'm wondering if maybe there's a different term that folks mean other than artesian well?
Okay, can you still hear me?
Yes.
So, well, then Nate, can you speak to why there is, why there are wetlands on the same piece of property? If it's not being fed from water that's close to the surface? And do you, would you agree that we need to have a professional come in and really see if there's anything there that could lead to the poisoning of our water supply? Seems like we need to make sure before we move forward. It seems to, it seems to make sense to me that needs to be done. And the engineer that has done his tests, I mean, we, I don't know, maybe, maybe he's, maybe he's done all this testing, but we're not privy to that. And it seems that we should be privy to that, and that we should really, I mean, right now, we've got, there's a huge water runoff issue from this site, I'm sure you've seen that, that is not being contained or properly dealt with. And this, I mean, this is a huge issue. So I just think that the water on this particular site and the wells that may be there, and the aquifer that runs along the top of the plateau right through Montego, and there are people that probably can take you right to where these wells are. You know, there are some old timers here and some history here that I think we can, we can.
Thanks for your comment, Lucy, yeah, I'm not, obviously, that, I'm here as a city council person, so I can't tell you everything there is to know about, about the drainage issues. I do agree that the runoff is currently an issue. I think that it needs to be corrected. I think RBT will tell you, that as soon as they can start with correct construction, they'll take care of that. I'm sure there are other ways to deal with it if this doesn't go to construction.
Hi, Nate, our engineer is here, can you please let Travis, can you put Travis back on? Because he wants to address this from a perspective, if you don't mind. Travis Wilson.
Yes, can you hear me? Just a comment, typically a phase one environmental study is done on a site development. And so the developer would be required to prepare one of the phase one or phase two environmental studies, which would. to prepare one of the phase one or phase two environmental studies, which would identify any environmental contamination liabilities on the property. And that's typically, that goes through regulatory agencies as well. So that most likely has been prepared. We are not the engineer on that. I have not seen any report as such, but it's very likely that a phase one environmental study has been done on that site, if, if that's the case, you know, that they've gotten as far as developing a site plan.
Travis, will you tell them who you are and what you do for the town? I just had a question. Somebody just asked, and what your background is. I mean, you are a professional.
Sure. My name is Travis Wilson. I am a professional engineer with LGA Engineering. My background is water, wastewater, stormwater, and so that's, that's what I've done for over 24 years. So I'd be glad to answer any specific questions about.
Well, just, we may have to refer back to you because you are the engineer we're using with some of the things that we've now started with our flow meters and that. You've got a hand raised. Well, it's still the same one, I think, Nate. I think.
Maybe I can, so as my job at the university, I hire and have a lot of phase ones done as Travis said, typically before property acquisition. So, so I see some things in the comment box and people asking questions that knowing that these things are not required. No, but they're typical due diligence that's done by every person looking at buying a property that has any sort of commercial or industrial history. And in that phase one, they look for underground storage tanks, and they look for wells and that type of thing. Now, I noticed in the chat box that one of the RBT owners said that they had done a phase one. Now, that is something that they have, and they can share it if they want to. That's not, but something that they purchased likely prior to acquisition. So Lucy has raised her hand again. She's had her three minutes. Do we want to go through, repeat, asking the question to the?
Let's ask the attorney how we handle this, because we're trying to, since we were called, since he received a letter about this, how should we, how do we think, Sam, if we?
It's up to, it's up to you. If you want to receive another comment, you can. Of course, you may be opening it up to other people who want to make second, second rounds.
Well, I think Lucy is unmuted. We asked Lucy, Lucy, are you, is this, are you reacting to something that you have heard since your last comment, and is this going to be something different?
No, I'm, I'm just saying that I think that the city of Montegoal needs to make sure that all of its residents and citizens are protected when it comes to water, when it comes to air.
Yes.
And I, I just, I feel like that we cannot rely on unobjective reporting suggested by the developers. We need to see the proof of that and understand exactly what the test revealed. And just make sure before moving forward on anything.
Thanks. It does sound like this is your continuation of your original comment, so I didn't read through at the timer.
Mr. Braver is here. Perhaps he could share some of his reports with us. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, do you want to address that?
We did do a phase one prior to, prior to acquisition, as you, as you pointed out. I think at this point, you know, I don't know that we'll, you know, that we'll disclose that. I don't think there's anything there that, that we would, that we would be worried about, but I'm not going to just, not going to just say that.
Well, here's a, here's an easy question, Brian, that may help put some of this to bed. Was there anything in the phase one that recommended a phase two? Okay, all right. So I can explain beyond that. So a phase one investigation looks at wells, looks at underground storage tanks and other environmental issues from the perspective of the potential purchaser to help them make a decision. If the person doing the phase one, which is an independent contractor, sees something of concern, they request a phase two. So I hope maybe that helps. If no phase two was, was requested, then that's a pretty good indication that there wasn't a whole lot there to see. Travis, did I miss anything in that?
I think that is correct.
Nate?
Yes.
Greg Maloof, I don't know how to raise my hand, so it's hard for me to ask some questions.
Hang on. Let me get the timer started here for you. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself, and then I'll start the timer.
Greg Maloof, resident of Montegoal. Has, and if I missed it, I apologize. Has there been a date and time for the town hall meeting?
Are you talking about the public hearing?
Yes.
That will be done. The, Deb, what's the date? March the 29th will be the public hearing, Greg.
What time? Via Zoom?
I know. If, if the governor, which we're hoping will lift the order at the end of the month, we're going to have that in person. Deb will it be at five o'clock? It'll be at five o'clock. But I mean, this will be posted. It's not been advertised. We have to do 15 days.
But aren't you going to, aren't you going to do it via Zoom in addition to having the open meeting so people?
It'll be Zoom. It'll be FaceTime live, but I'm saying it will be, it'll be an open meeting. We'll be back in the conference.
Thank you. There have been many chats posted. Do you answer those chats?
Tonight, we tried that the first time. I realize I've kind of broken the rule because I've been looking at them, but we tried answering all the chats the first time, and the meeting got so chaotic that it was hard to carry a train of thought. So we're trying to impose Zoom rule, Robert's rules of order by doing the three-minute comment. That's what it's about.
Okay. And my last question, a report has been done, and that's fine. Is anyone on the city or the consultants from Chattanooga, and I don't know their titles, has anyone on the city side reviewed those reports and documents?
The phase one and phase two?
Yes. I mean, the developer did certain reports and studies and all that. Has it been submitted to city officials?
We haven't even seen the site plan that I'm aware of. Nate, you have it, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we had to start all over, Greg. Want to answer a question here, Mary Beth just spit out there. No, this has not been scheduled, but if it is scheduled, that will be the timeframe it will be scheduled. Because we have to make sure that we don't have the, that were done before with dates and times. So Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the reason we're looking at whenever we do anything. And we also have to have a public hearing for Phelps' property and other items, not just RBT. So there's multiple facets that that public here will address, Greg, if and when we have it, when we finish with this meeting. So we're not getting the cart before the horse, but as we pursue forward, that's the timeline that Sam's working with us to where we make sure we meet all deadlines.
Thank you. But, okay.
And we haven't, we haven't seen the reports because we haven't got that far as we're just now going back to rezoning. Is that not correct, Sam? The steps were.
That's, that's correct. I mean, until it's rezoned, there's no reason to, I mean, the site plan will then be submitted for approval to the planning commission, but that's getting the cart before the horse if we got the site plan first. We've got to have the, the actual rezoning occur before the site plan comes into focus.
Understood. So there's no work to be done until such time? What's the timeline on that scenario?
Well, I mean, if the, if the, if the rezoning is approved on the second reading on March 29th, then the, the planning commission meets on April 6th, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
But there's still the process that we have to have, the testing from the flow meters will have to be looked at. That'll be done, Travis, before the end of the month, correct?
That's correct. The meters are due to stay in for 60 days. So we are going to take a preliminary look so that we can have something to report back before the meeting.
In March. That's the March meeting. Also, is there not, and there's a traffic study that is being done now, which was a requirement of TDEC, correct? Somebody's got their hand raised.
Suzie has her hand raised. I was going to acknowledge her once we, we run through these questions.
You want to go ahead and get Suzie, and then we'll address the ones we can, Nate?
Okay, see. I've asked her to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I just am a little bit confused because it seems to me like whether or not there are wells on this property should be of primary concern before this property is rezoned, all of it is rezoned C3. If there are wells on the property, none of it should be zoned C3, it seems to me. It seems to me like the responsible process should be to identify whether or not there are wells on the property before the zoning, like if you, if you zone at C3, then it's available for a truck stop. And we, and we're going to do that before we identify whether or not there's a well on it? That does not make sense to me. That's all, that's, that's my only comment.
We had a hand raise. Someone naming Honeycutt, do you want to speak?
I'm sure. My name is Jessica Honeycutt. I live on Spring Street in Montegoal. I am a cosmetologist at the main attraction. My dad has owned that business and my grandpa before him. The question that I want to bring before city council is merely just a question. And my concern mostly with this possibility of rezoning to a C3, I did mention it in the comments, and I figured I'd just go ahead and speak to get past that, so you don't have to go back and read. With the droughts we've seen in the past, we have definitely acquired less collective rainwater in the last, probably decade, at least since I was a kid up here. And knowing that we have only what falls from the sky as water, and I know just a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about a water issue as far as some of our infrastructure goes with our water systems up on this sweet little hill. With an industry, an industrial business like this and C3 zoning and a company of this size, in years past, we saw droughts that led us to closing businesses that rely solely on water, much like ours. The car wash, a couple of other restaurants. There were timeframes of the day when we were asked to use water in timeframes. We were asked not to because, again, we only get what falls from the sky up here. We're on a mountain. We're not in a valley. We don't get runoff. With an industry like this and with that report being done, being a business owner prospectively in the future for a family business, that's a major concern of mine. I do want my kids and my grandkids to be able to reside on this mountain for generations to come. And with major infrastructures like this coming in and the water consumption that they may consume, is that something that would be considered? And what, you know, what's being done to ensure not only that we have safe water, but that we have the correct amount of water so that our businesses thrive in really dry summers? Because we know they exist, and we know we get less water every summer.
When was it, Nate? And you can probably help me. Whenever Big Creek did the connections, there was a grant written that we're now connected to Big Creek that will provide water that we don't have during the time of the drought. And so to ensure there is a lit amount of water, that has been done, Jessica. Nate, do you remember the year that was done?
So that, that water report came out, I think, in 2009 or 2010, and it had several specific recommendations about how to avoid what happened. I think she, Mr. Honeycutt's probably referring to 2007. I know that was the one that I, that sure did burn in my mind when we ran out of water. So there was that water report in 2009 that gave, oh, I'm out of time. No, that, that talked about how to better integrate our water supply. And there were a lot of recommendations in that, and some were done and some were not. The things that were done that, that I think have got us in a little different position, or we're now, all the water systems on the plateau are interconnected. So ones with a lot more capacity, like Big Creek, is now connected to Montegoal and to Swanee. The other big thing that happened since that drought was Tracy City raised their dam and raised their capacity. And of course, we're connected with Tracy City as well. So I think there's some legitimate concerns about, yes, and in that, in that report, you can look at the, the flow ratings and the requirements and what these additionalities that they did to the system would do to add more capacity to the system. I think there's some legitimate concerns that we're working through with the flow meters on whether or not we have the sewer capacity for something like that. But I think we'll know about that before hopefully any decision is made.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Keep in mind, we've got a 10-inch mane coming from Cooley's Rip, too.
So you're, to answer Jessica's question, you feel like those concerns have been addressed, John, for the increase of water, and now the connections made on the plateau? Because you were here. I didn't know you were still here.
Yes, they have.
Oh, the testing. And John, we're going to ask you, because you've been here for a long time now, and probably one of the experts. I've heard from TDEC, TDOT, and everyone else, and the way you run our utility. The question's been asked, too. One is with the capacity. The reason we're doing the testing now is to contest the I and I of the sewer is what Nate referring to, right? For the flow of what's going through the system. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Inflow and infiltration, be groundwater.
Now, do you know anything? I know that you, you've been around here a long time, and there has been, we have an engineer with us. We also have Nate that knows some about that. What about an Artesian well, or are you familiar, that's been brought up to us? I mean, this, this work was already done. What, tell us what you know about it.
I know nothing about it. I mean, I've, I've been on that property years ago and stuff, and I've never seen an Artesian well. I'm not saying there's one there, not there, but I've never seen one.
Okay, Nate, I'll be next, so.
Not seeing any other comments. Oh, Mary Beth Best. So Mary Beth, you've gone. I saw, I asked you sort of the same question that I asked Lucy. Is this a, this a follow-up to something you've heard since then?
It's a new question, and I typed it in there. I'm trying to follow the chronological order of things, and it does seem very confusing. So are you saying that tonight, the town council is going to vote on a recommendation by the planning commission to change a 20-acre property to C3 without a completed sewage and water capacity study? Now, am I clear on that? That's not been done. And, and we are, we are looking at you all voting tonight before that, that study is done?
So I was going to address this anyway. Could I, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong. So the process of rezoning is not something that is, should be taken lightly nor is taken lightly. And so the way the ordinance is set up, it doesn't just happen tonight. So tonight, we will consider it, and we will make a vote, but that is not a vote that does the rezoning. What happens after this vote is it triggers a public meeting where we will all discuss the pros and cons of this. And then following that public meeting, there is a second vote, and two consecutive votes in favor of the rezoning will then trigger the rezoning. So we're beginning that process tonight. And when, when we get to it, I want to say a little more about that, because I think it's important. I think it's, it's, several people have, have come to me and said, after the planning commission recommended the rezoning, they said, well, it's a done deal. It's going in now. And that's, that's not how the process works. The process is stepwise, and lots of information can come up over time to change the situation. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question? I know your, your hand is back up and you're muted.
Let Sam, let Sam address that since he's the attorney on the process so it's clear. And then clarification, Sam, I know you and Earl and Garrett had looked at acreage of what amount of acreage we're actually addressing here. We're not addressing 20 acres here tonight, so I don't know.
No, I don't, I don't believe so. And I don't know the exact acreage mayor, but no, that's, it's not 20 acres, that's for sure. Nate's exactly right. Any, a zoning, a zoning ordinance is like any other ordinance under Tennessee law. Under the charter that Montegoal has, which is the mayor aldermanic charter, you have to read the ordinance twice. And this is simply the first reading. In other words, it can be fully reconsidered at the second meeting in March. There will be a full public hearing at that time. And the council will consider everyone's comments. But because it is a two-step process, this is the first step.
Sorry, Sam, I didn't mean to cut you off. That was a leftover.
Follow-up question, I just want it clearly stated in the minutes, I understand the process. And Sam, I appreciate you explaining that, I understand the process. But what I'm saying is that we are going to, the council is going to vote on a recommendation without all of the important and critical information. And the result will be a 20-acre property that will be C3 at the end of the process. I want it clearly stated that you do not have all of these reports in. You do not have access to the RVT Phase 1 report. You do not have the water and capacity, water and sewage capacity report. But you are going to vote on a recommendation tonight.
Someone has her hand up, Nate, Chris Tate.
DeeDee.
Am I unmuted?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
I'm a small business owner and in 2007, because I have a tiny hotel with 15 bathrooms, I ended up having to drill a well because Montegoal ran out of water. And I have one of the oldest businesses on top of them. And I'm concerned about my costs. My guests already have to pay 19.25% taxes, as high as New York City. 5% to the town, 5% to the county and 9.25% to the state. What's going to happen about water costs with my 15 bathroom business?
Why would this affect your water cost, DeeDee? I know I've seen this put on Facebook, but that shouldn't affect your water costs.
Well, I'm in a unique situation, as you know very well Marilyn. The assembly built the water structure for the town and now we have only one contract. So if I have a leak, the assembly only gets one contest a year to, you know, caught, to go back to the city and say, well, this is a main or this was, you know, DeeDee's on house. So I'm very, very concerned about water costs and I did drill a well because I was really afraid that I, you know, wasn't gonna be able to run my business back in 2007.
Do you know the reason that there is one, just one water as far as, that they can ask requests once a year? Did you know that the assembly took the town of Montegoal to court? And they won the lawsuit because they only went to two master meters? And they bill you out because that happened in, was it 2008, 2010? And that was what the assembly wanted to do. So that was based up on the assembly, not on the town of Montegoal.
Right. I do understand that and I'm sympathetic to both sides. But I'm a tiny, small business owner like The Main Attraction. Water's a big issue, you know, for a hotel owner. You know, the taxes, the hotel taxes, motel taxes are a big issue. So I just wonder, are our water costs going to increase through building more development on the mountain?
It shouldn't. I mean, why should it? I mean, that doesn't even, that doesn't even go together, even though I've seen that on Facebook, that is incorrect. Now, is the water increases will increase in costs probably so. But to say because you had any business or you had the tiny homes or you had another development, then I couldn't see why that would happen. John, you're here, do you see why it would increase the cost?
I don't see any reason why it should.
Travis, you're here as an engineer.
Mayor, I wouldn't really be able to answer that until we saw the study to indicate the effects, but I would not anticipate, you know, as of yet, any, any type of needed increase until we really see what we're dealing with.
I want to just notice something. Somebody put on your revenue. Water and sewer money cannot be mixed with general funds. And DeeDee, you're correct, you do pay, is it 5% as far as occupancy tax to the town of Montegoal? And is it 5% to Grundy County? No property taxes, period, comes to the town of Montegoal from Grundy, Harrier and Franklin, that goes to the respective county on income. So just for clarification, that's not all of the increases in, in the taxes from Montegoal. So just for the record and just to clarify, I know it was mentioned, why are we doing this? We chose to do, not a requirement, but we chose to follow the guidelines to make sure there was capacity as a council. We were just dealing with a zoning issue and we chose to take additional steps while we're going through this to take care of everything. So anyone can see, you go back to last year when it started while we're doing these things before we do, we're not rushing into anything. Sam, I will refer to you since you're a zoning expert. We also, of course, have Sam here as an attorney to guide us through this process to make sure we do protect the town of Montegoal and our residents and our citizens. Is that correct?
That's correct.
May I ask a question?
Nate?
Yeah, let me get the timer set up, Jim. All right, go ahead.
But it appears that this whole issue of rezoning this residential property from R3 to C3 came about as a result of the owner, current owners desiring to build or have a truck plaza on that property. That's the only reason rezoning is being considered. Since that happens to be the function that the owner proposes to use the property for. Somebody talking? Since that seems to be the reason the rezoning came about, maybe by a threat of a lawsuit or an actual lawsuit, why has the city not taken it into consideration that it needs to do these studies before it facilitates this very intensive truck plaza to come into the town? I mean, you have totally disregarded the rights of the adjoining residential property owners. For some reason, and evidently it is to facilitate this truck plaza so the, you can get more money from tax revenue. So I'm asking the question, why aren't these studies, traffic study, environmental study, the sewage, the water supply, wells, all these other issues? Why is this not being resolved before we, we go to a vote on rezoning? End of question.
Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are talking about the small parcel of property and I'm not making, discrediting the small parcel of property. I know we say R3, 6.4 acres makes a difference in the situation, we're not ignoring that. We're talking about, and of course, again, I know you and Garrett had an X amount. You sent it to us, I don't have it in front of me, I'm just trying to make, this is the point of clarification.
Well, I think Garrett has, I think some of the citizens have corresponded with TDEC on this issue already. And TDEC has responded on some of this. TDEC has certain responsibilities, the town has certain responsibilities. Just because a, a property is zoned C3 doesn't mean that ultimately it can be used in a way that is environmentally unfriendly. And, and, and the town is not necessarily the, the regulator of environmental issues. It's certainly something that should be considered in a rezoning. But, but for example, stormwater is something that is more of a TDEC issue. Whether or not there are underground storage tank issues, that's a TDEC issue. I, I think a lot of people who are concerned about this issue are, are running the gamut of what possibly could go wrong and everything. And, and certainly you're to consider whatever is relevant to the rezoning. But whether this test was done or that test was done is not necessarily the issue at this time.
So again, I wanna go back to process because I think in process is pretty important for me that we are, we're gonna talk about this tonight. And I, I have been, I'm happy to hear the comments. I have been really disappointed to hear how it's, it's sort of devolved into sides and teams and all the nuances gone out of it. I think there are some really legitimate concerns that the neighbors have about how to protect their quality of life. I've certainly been doing a lot of research. I can point everyone to the American Planning Association. They have a, they have a short paper on using, on residential buffers between commercial zones and whether or not R3 zoning is the best way to protect R1 or whether walls are or whether vegetative buffers are. I've certainly been reading a lot over the last several weeks. And where I've come to is that there are a lot of questions. And I guess I'll go ahead and talk about it. This, I, I've begun to ask those questions to Brian Graber, the developer. Because I feel like if the rezoning is the time where the town can and should weigh in on how this proposed development might impact the town, but also particularly the neighbors. Once the rezoning has happened in the site plan and everything, that goes to the planning commission, but it doesn't come back to the full council again. And so this is where I feel like this is my, this is my time to give input and I think it's important. And, and I'm taking this decision really seriously. So I've had some concerns. I reached out to Brian because I felt like, and it's a result of reading this American Planning Association document, there are lots of ways to protect homeowners surrounding commercial development. And I reached out to Brian to ask the question, are there ways that we could do this development so that rezoning that parcel, and whether it's six acres or four acres, I don't, I can only go what I'm, what I'm told by the people we hired. Are there ways that we can rezone this property to make it a better outcome for the neighbors than leaving it R3? And, and I'll tell you that Brian and I have had several conversations and several discussions. I've looked at the site plans and I'm happy to, to, to share them with anyone. In fact, I've reached out to some of the neighbors and I hope we can do more of this. Because I think what I am hoping that we can do in, particularly in the public forum, but over, over the next month, as this process naturally slowly takes place, should it go forward tonight, is really talk about what it's gonna take to protect the neighbors. Because that's, that's why we're here. And it's not an issue of I do like this person or I don't like this person or I, to me, it's, it's all about the golden rule. We wanna do unto others as we would have them do unto you. And if I were a neighbor, I would want some, I would want my neighbors to, to, to protect me as much as possible from a development. And if I were a developer, I would want the town to take in good faith the fact that I have invested in their property and try to come up with some middle ground. So that's what Brian and I are doing. We haven't called for a vote yet, but I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and tell you where I am feeling. Brian and I, in our conversations, have talked about several ways to protect the homeowners. And it, and it's several of the, of the same issues that Jan brought up in her letter. It's lighting, it's buffers, it's how to do vegetation better. It's how trucks are parked and where they're parked. And as he and I have gone back and forth, both of us have lamented sort of when we're screaming at each other and yelling and there's all this vitriol, it's hard to make progress on, on doing good decisions. And so what I ask him is if I am going to support this Phase 1 of this vote tonight, I, I need to know what you're gonna do to make this better to the homeowners. And I need you to help me reach out to the homeowners to see what their concerns are and see if we can make it work. And then I want to, and this is, this is going a little bit behind, Sam, I hope I'm not, I hope I'm not getting things too out of order here. I would like to have a site plan that has had input, input from the neighbors by the next regular meeting so that we can all see what we're, what we're getting into. I think that's important. And I know from a planning process that they, we don't need to have the site plan that early. But I have told Brian, I need to see the site plan. And I think that the neighbors and many, many of, all of us on the council and mayors also need to see the site plan. Because in the end, that's what it's about. It's about having a product that we can all be proud of. And I've frankly been impressed with my conversations with Brian. He's made some commitments to me. I wanna see more. I wanna see those commitments on paper. And I know lots of other people wanna see those on paper as well. But we kept that conversation going about how, how do we, how is there something tangible that he can bring to this meeting tonight to help me understand that he's serious enough that we can move forward talking about it some more? And so Brian's unmuted, but I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about what he has agreed to that I'm pretty proud of as a first step. And I wanna say before I go any further, this is not me saying I'm ready to build the truck stop because Brian said this. This is me saying Brian has been a, a trustworthy partner thus far in this with my, in my experience. And I'm willing to move forward tonight based on what he's committed to tonight. And I would like to see him commit to more, hopefully in conversation with the neighbors so that in next month's regular meeting, we've got something we can all be proud of. So what Brian and I've talked about is using Dark Sky Initiative compliant lighting for the entire development. If you're not familiar with the Dark Sky Initiative, it's an international organization that's interested in reducing light pollution. So that's not just light pollution that pollutes our neighbors and that shines lights on adjacent residential, it does that. But it also makes sure that all the lighting in the development goes down so that we can see the stars. And if we believe that Montegoal has a future without sore recreation and tourism, we don't wanna be polluting the sky with a bunch of night, with a bunch of light pollution. And so Brian has committed that if this goes forward, this will be Night Sky compliant. That's a good first step for me. That's, that's a, a bit of evidence on my part that he's willing to play ball with the neighbors and with the town. Brian, you're muted. Do you wanna, you wanna say anything more about it?
Well, you know, I'm so glad that you kind of phrased it the way you did and introduced it, our conversations the way that you did. I think that, I think that is a perfect kind of way to describe our state of mind in working through this process. We wanna be good partners to the community. We wanna be good partners and neighbors to, to the city of Montegoal and all of the, and all of our, you know, all of our neighbors. I think through, through all of this, you know, a lot of the vitriol, as you said, I think we lose sight of, you know, the spirit of, of how, of how we wanna interact with each other. And I have said over and over again that I find most of the neighbors to be very nice people. And, and we want to build a state-of-the-art place that everyone is proud of in the community. Certainly, this, 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 this piece of property is going to look amazing and we want it to be amazing for the neighborhood as well. Someone said something about. Um, I, someone said something about the TA and, and Pedro, and have you looked at their reputation? Uh, they have, they have an impeccable reputation in this industry. Uh, they're the third largest, um, you know, truck, uh, travel plaza company in America. If you look at the operations that have been built recently in Columbia, South Carolina, Hillsborough, Texas, Wilmington, Illinois, and even here in Caryville, Tennessee, you will find that, uh, they are beautiful facilities, well maintained, well operated in our pillars in the community, which is what we strive to be. We're, we, we, we want this, we want this development to be, um, transformational and, 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 and an amazing uplifting place for everybody in the community to be proud of. And, uh, so much, you know, and I don't want this to be controversial, but so much of the negativity of, 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 of some people that are in opposition, I think drowns out so much of the positive. Uh, and so many of the supportive comments that, that we get all the time. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Thank you for dealing with everything that you've dealt with for so long. It's been eight months since it was first recommended for approval by a state planner. And yet we're still having these conversations, but.
Brian.
Yeah, go ahead.
And it, so I, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to other comments, but I just want to reply. So this is not me saying I'm, I'm ready to move forward and approve the truck stop. This is me saying, this is me asking for us to begin a process. And before this truck stop is, is approved, or if this, the, the rezoning is approved, it's going to be approved from my perspective. I'm not going to improve, uh, approve it until after, um, we have a site plan that addresses the needs of the community. After we have a, uh, water impact study that addresses the need and ensures that we have capacity and a way to do it. And after we have a road study that ensures that we have the roads and traffic to do with this. Uh, and we haven't even talked about the actual, uh, the, the actual vote yet. Uh, I, somebody in the chat box said that they would like to speak who had not spoken. Um, so can, who, and I'm, there's so many chats in there. Can you raise your hand, please? Whoever you are, you hadn't spoken. Oh, Casey Reed wants to speak again. And we've, we've done that. So, uh, let me reset the timer. Sorry. And, and y'all caught me, Brian was talking before I could punch my buttons and reset. So I cut him off before his three minute time was up. But I think he, I started the timer late. So Casey, go ahead.
Am I here?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not seeing myself. Start video. I'm not able to start video. You can start your video. Cause the host has stopped it. Can you start my video tonight? Can you hear me?
Oh no. Every time I try to, I hit the.
It says the host has asked you to start your video. I did. And it's, okay, there I am. Thank you so much. Um, and, and my feeling, I think we need to go back a little bit on, on all of this to the beginning. And, and, and I, again, I have a question to the planning commission, to the, um, council. Have, has everyone on this committee seen and studied the financial statements of RBT? Have you studied the financial statements of their investors? Have you studied what TOA, what support they will give? And I appreciate Mr. Graber, you know, uh, being the cheerleader for TOA. But the fact is, uh, according to my research and friends of mine in the market in New York City, it's not, I mean, again, it's, it's two and a half out of five stars. That's not a very good rating. Uh, from what I'm told, with, with brokers in, in New York, that TOA will sell you the franchise, they'll sell you the, the, the gas, but they don't come in. If you've got a spill or you've got problems, they're, they're gone. They're gone to the next franchisee to sell that. So, the question here is, is this group strong enough to hold on, uh, if something goes wrong? Or are we going to have a 22 acre site of asphalt sitting there empty? If they don't make it, that's something to consider. It happens all of the time, all the time. So the financial strength, have y'all seen it? Have y'all looked at their financial statements?
No.
No? No? Oh my gosh. You're, you're getting ready to allow a business to come in this big with this much impact? And you don't know the fun, you're just, you're, you're depending on what they're telling you. You have not researched their financial standing or their investors, where the money's coming from. Guys.
I'm sure you can share it with us, what you found.
That's your job, not my job. I, I mean, that is your job as city officials to find out, well, what, where the money's coming from? How strong is it? I mean, this is just common business sense. And it's shocking. It's, it's shocking. That's all I'll say. It's shocking to me. We're dealing with reality here. We're not dealing with pie in the sky. We're not dealing with blue sky. We're dealing with reality when it comes to financials. If you're not strong enough to hold on, uh, then you're going to have a asphalt, you know, building sitting there that's going to be an eyesore, you know?
Thanks for the comment. I've got another comment here. I gotta find a pilcher. I told her she would be next.
Hey, okay, thanks. Uh, I'm not Martha Ann, I'm David.
Okay, hang on. Let me start the timer here. Don't get, there you go. All right, go ahead.
Okay, um, David Pilcher, I'm a CPA. I've got probably 11 years of experience working around the trucking industry, primarily in the dealership area. So I've got some idea about some of the environmental issues involved. What I'm seeing through this whole process, and I know it came in, started with the previous council and previous mayor, that I think the citizens here, and we're newcomers, only been here a year and a half. They're seeing that they're just not getting enough upfront information. Coming in with a project like this, right next to a already large, uh, truck stop, which is a darn site better than the one that used to be there, by the way. I remember the old one. Uh, and we talk about Montegoal being this jewel on the mountain with all this beautiful nature and everything. And well, I think people are just trying to figure out how this all fits in with, with the vision Montegoal seems to have for itself, that it shows on its website. And if maybe we have to get through this first vote to get, to get to the real information, but things like environmental impact study, traffic study, um, water impact study, seems like all of that should have been available to the planning commission at the very beginning of this process. And why, I mean, it's, there's such a lack of transparency to use a term, you know, that a lot of people use today. It seems like if, and, um, if you guys had, had come in with all of this information, Brian, from the very beginning, and been totally upfront with everyone, this would have been a whole lot smoother project, I think. And I think also they need to, they need to tell the city what the real end game is of the total, the total package you ultimately want to end up. So they have, so the town has all of the information necessary, not just phase one. But you know, what's the, what's the entire end game? You know? And, you know, so I'll throw that out there.
Hey Nate, just, just really quick. We, we had our, we had our head engineer Kenny Sadler attend the August, uh, meeting. And he answered questions for three and a half hours, almost identical to the questions that have been raised tonight. And he, and he was satisfactory to everyone on the planning committee at that time and satisfactory to Garrett Ames, who was the state planner on, uh, on, uh, president at that meeting that night.
Yeah. And I think, I do think some of this, um, has to do with the change in administration, you know, why I, I had to get, the plans from Brian directly. They should have been at the court, at the city hall left from the, uh, last administration. We couldn't find any copies of it. Um, I, so I do think there's some of that. There's some of the fact that this is drug on. So, you know, it sounds like somebody has answered some of these questions in the past. So we're, that's one of the things I'm hoping we can do in the next 30 days is bring some of this information to the top. And
Looks like he's frozen.
The information about what this development is going to look like. And that is why, um, I'm asking them to do that over the next 30 days. And I'm asking people who are interested in seeing how this might be able to move forward and protect the neighbors and be an asset to the town to get involved. Mary Beth, you've, you've spoken now at least twice and I'm, I'm really concerned that we're already at two and a half hours and we haven't even started. And I've got a, a ding asking for us to, to stop the repeats.
Hey Nate, um, I just, Debbie just found this. Uh, these actual plans, and I, again, this is not confirming this is moving forward. Debbie found this in the back room because we found a lot of things that was done February the fourth, uh, February the fourth, it looks like. That was, um, it was RBT Enterprises submitted these, um, again, I've never seen them. It looks like, and also these were dated eight, 17, 20. So anyone that wants to look at them, uh, I've never seen them until tonight. Debbie found them in the back room, just like we found Montegoal 2020. So those will be here if anybody wants to come and look at them during this timeframe. I know it's not the ones you've talked to with Brian that you mentioned tonight, because you just said you had spoke with him. For the barns and part of the walls and part of the additional things, the lighting, which Jan and Will had both mentioned. But anyone's welcome to look at these, but these were not accessible. There's several things that we're discovering in the back room. Actually, I think tomorrow you and Greg are going to be discovering more paperwork that's in an area, if I'm not mistaken. And thank you, Mr. Miliff. So before the record, I did want to clarify something. As you mentioned, and Sam, you're here. So at any point in time, we have done and are doing, are doing. Whenever, and Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, we do work with companies. I haven't went to everyone and done a background check. It is not our job to do it, but to protect this town it is. And that's what we're doing in every one. There has been induendos, there's been incorrect information. There's been untrace put out there. We'll deal with those later. I'm not even going to get involved with it. But the point is for us to do what's right for the town of Montegoal, to answer those questions are valid questions. None of us, and Mr. Pilcher, none of us like what happened here. We had a plan that was destroyed. We had a process that was destroyed. And we have done due diligence and we will continue to do it. I could ask people, have you bought property and you were in the wrong zone? You had the wrong things done? We have, we have 34 pieces of property we have got to look at. Three are similar to this. So this is only one. Well, actually, when we get on with this discussion, we have another one. It's a different area, but the same thing. So we're doing our best collectively to fix them and not rush into anything. Whoever may speak.
Kate, well, is that Joa?
This is Joanne Atwood. I don't know how to raise my hand on this.
Can you hold Katie Goforth was ahead of you. Let me let Kate go. You can be next.
All right.
Let me get the timer started here.
Hey Nate, my question is just really short. I was wondering when you were speaking with Brian, did you pose the question about noise?
We, we did. We've talked a lot about noise. And, and, and again, what I'm basing it on is what I've read in the American Planning Association document, which is, um, wall is needed. Vegetation doesn't work. It's, uh, it's wall and space. So it's the further you get the noise away, the offending noise away. And, uh, the, the better your impermeable wall is, along with some associated vegetation to soften the noise. It, as it impacts the wall, those are the things that make the biggest impact. So, um, the things that he and I are talking about, again, that I would love for other people to be involved in. And if you don't have my email, I'm going to put it in the chat box a little bit and we, we can get together and we can talk about these things. And I don't know what the solution will be, but I find it a lot more productive to speak and to try to work through the issues than to just, um, lob, um, accusations back and forth. So one of the things we are talking about is they've already agreed to an eight foot wall, but there's a lot of dirt that still needs to be moved. And the way their site plan is set up, the water is actually running to the west and south and being collected. So there's no need for the, the grading that I can see along what is, I guess, the north wall, this one that separates it from, um, Trussell Road, um, to be at grade. So why don't we take some dirt and build that up so that the wall is physically higher, so that it creates more separation? Um, again, I want to see that in writing and I want to see that in the plans, but, but Brian and I are conceptually talking about that. Yes, we're talking about noise.
So a follow-up, um, what was the distance? Because as I understand it, some of those homes will be like 80 feet from the property?
The current zoning ordinance calls for a hundred feet, uh, a buffer to the nearest parking space from the nearest residential lot line. That's a, uh, so currently that's what they have. The former, um, ordinance actually called for a hundred feet from the, the district line, which would actually be an additional 20 feet. So we're, we're, you know, this is, these are stuff we're talking about. Um, I'm certainly more up on zoning and, uh, ordinance than I have been and probably will be even more up on it by the time I'm done. Um, but, and they've already agreed. So the trucks will only be backed in along that residential side if it is to be built. So that'll put the trucks, you know, those trucks are about 50, 60 feet long. So that puts the, the engine in the, the sound, pointed in the other direction as well. But again, these are all, these are all conversations that are ongoing. I'm, I'm not telling you that I'm, uh, this is the way it's going to be and I'm supporting it. I'm telling you that I want to have a conversation with somebody and I want to see if we can come to a solution.
And Nate too, I don't want to, I don't want to get into the engineering of a truck engine at this, at this juncture. But I have been told that, uh, that the newer model trucks do not put out, um, do not put out any noise at all, uh, while they're idling in park. So, um, that's about as far as I want to go with that right now. But, uh, we can, we can speak to more of that, uh, at a public hearing or at the next meeting too.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, Brian, just, uh, you've spoken twice. I, I asked Mary Beth not to speak, uh, after her second run. So I'm going to probably, we're going to move to a vote then. If you're okay with that, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we're, I'm trying to treat everybody fairly.
Yep. Sorry about that.
Are there, oh, oh, so yes, Joa, Joanne.
Yes.
Before you get started, so you don't take your time, I will answer the question in your chat box. Uh, according to Brian, there will be no big sign like you see at truck stops.
Well, that wasn't my question, but I appreciate that answer. I also appreciate the fact that, uh, the emotional, um, component of this, which is running high for all of us, myself included, as a homeowner directly across the street on Trussell. My property value as of six weeks ago has already dropped $30,000, uh, $30,000 in value. So if I wanted to move, because I don't want to live across the street from a truck stop, I would lose money on this house. So, so emotions are high and all. What I'm going to ask is a very simple question. You've heard some, uh, concerns from all of us about, um, moving forward on, um, voting, uh, because you don't have full information. I'm going to ask, would you please consider not voting tonight until you have all the information? And as, um, neighbors, um, I certainly would feel better to, to have the transparency. Uh, there has not been transparency in this deal from the start. Uh, that's a huge concern. And that's a wedge that has been, uh, driven between those of us that don't want a, a truck stop in our front yard and the, the owners. It sounds like Nate, you particularly have had conversations, I've met Brian, to have ongoing conversations. Why would you push a vote tonight when we have so many concerns? And we're simply asking you to do your due diligence, get your reports, look at them, share them, and not move forward with the first vote? Because it's being pushed through too fast. Eight months, Brian, is not a long time in a development this size. It is not unreasonable to ask that you get that information and you share that information with us prior to starting this vote tonight. And that's all I have to say.
I can answer for myself. So when I've been asking Brian to do all these things, he has been pushing back and saying, hey, you're asking me to, to again, go back and make concessions when I've already made concessions once. And not only that, just the, the act of revising the site plan is going to cost me ten thousand dollars, the site, the number he gave me. And so what he asked me is, how, how do I have any sort of inkling that this is going to move forward to encourage you to invest the money in doing some of the things and drawing some of the things you have been asking for? And.
Well, it's already cost me, it's already cost me thirty thousand dollars. And the, and the project isn't started yet. So ten thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, it's costing all of us. Money is costing us emotional input. There is a cost to doing this. And his cost of doing business shouldn't outweigh my cost of a loss of already thirty thousand dollars. It doesn't make sense. It's not, it isn't unreasonable for us, you particularly, as the council, to have that information, to look at that information and then move forward. That is simply a, a business procedure. And so again, I would ask you not to vote tonight. To get that information, he has costs for this project and he will continue to have costs. We're suffering the consequences of this project. Our considerations up, you know, at the beginning, I never felt like there was any consideration for the property owners. That seems to be changing slightly. So could you not follow through and get that information? You've heard from several different people, the specifics, the specifics of that. Do your due diligence. You'll make us feel better and have more confidence, not only in the city council on the job that you're doing to protect us as citizens, but in Brian and his project. It, it's, it's not a big deal to have that, those requests met. And so please don't vote tonight.
And I apologize that I had not, I reached out to some of your neighbors and I had not gotten your number. I would, I, I do want to reach out and, and talk more with you one-on-one. And, and, and I would encourage you, I hope, hopefully maybe we can even do that with Brian. There may be an opportunity, it may just be, I'm sure the public forum is going to be this and more, but I kind of hope that we could, some of us could get together and, and see if we can address some of the concerns even before the public meeting. Because I think, you know, it's going to come down to either RBT is going to be able to address the concerns and they're not. And there will be an opportunity next month to vote on that. I just, I want to make sure we, we're having the conversation.
Hey Nate, let me ask the question here. And I do understand it. And I'm not saying anybody, and I want to clarify this, I'm not saying the neighborhood didn't do due diligence. This, we all inherited, y'all did, and we did. And we are trying to fix it regardless. And like I said, I'm just, forget about the social media, forget about who said what, we're not taking a sign. But if RBT, which you've been the one that's been talking to Brian recently, and the neighbors would be willing to have a public meeting here, schedule it in a conference room, discuss the issues before the public hearing, and then be at that point to be able to address it again. That would give time. Why not, why not have that meeting and do it two at a time? Wear your mask, you know, now that things are changed, you know, schedule it five at a time, but have the conference room if RBT is willing to meet with those plans to discuss it. So are they willing to do that?
Well, are, would they be willing to give us the information? Having those meetings would be great. But I'd like to have, I would like to have the meeting with substantive information in front of me. Not conversations about goodwill, but specific documents that, that address the issues that you've listened to tonight from several different people. That's what would make sense. You know, we're, we're past the emotional issue. We're now down to the due diligence of how do you do this correctly? And to have a conversation to say, I like you, you like me, we really want every, you know, everybody to be one big happy family and, and we want to be good neighbors. That's great, but that's been done. Let's get down to the studies and look at that as a group and know what we're talking about and have those conversations. And I would be the first one there.
Can I bring you a set of plans tomorrow?
Nate, but let me, let me clarify this. If RBT are willing to do tonight, before we do anything, to have a public meeting, like you've mentioned, with the documents, with the information, because this is all going to be presented. I mean, that's the reason we're trying to find out where we're at before we get to the end of this project. I mean, they're doing a traffic study. T-Dot's doing that. There's a lot more, Sam brought it up, that has to be done regardless. It's going to continue to be done. A lot of these things, the Travis is now our engineer. He can be there to help review. And he's not anyone's, he's just been hired. Travis, can you be available for a meeting to answer both constituents and other questions? If this meeting can be scheduled between now and, I don't have a calendar, let me find my calendar, the March meeting? I mean, would everyone be willing to have with documents, you've already been the negotiator with part of this night to be there? Any of the council can be there. We haven't seen it. To see this stuff collectively because, and then we could move, we would know where we're at to move forward with anything else. This is just one of three meetings at least. So. Ms. Joanne, would that work? You're the one that's asked for it. If Nate's there, they're willing to bring documentation. And then if we're, and we can schedule, Sam, can we not schedule a meeting tonight, a special meeting to address this, this way, an open forum?
Sam is muted.
Can somebody unmute? Sam, can you unmute yourself?
You can.
Nate, you've sort of presented it without paperwork. RBT and the neighborhoods, are y'all willing to meet before this meeting, you know, and with, with documentation? Here at town hall?
I just want to make sure I understand. Are you, you're saying this is in addition to, this is prior to, this is tabling this vote tonight and voting in a special meeting?
I've said you deal with one vote tonight, that we deal with one vote tonight, which is on here, because we've still got Rogers to do and a lot more that we've got to address in this meeting. But then you have this meeting before anything else happens, you know, towards the end of the month.
In addition to.
In addition to with documentation, with all the stuff that you said that's been presented, we'll have air engineer there. All these things can be addressed. I cannot answer them. Some of the business things I can answer. Now, I haven't went through your portfolio, or I haven't went through Sam's, or I haven't went through Casey's, and I haven't been with the RBTs. No. I really don't know that I could do that. Sam, that might be a little, you know, it might be a lawsuit pending the town if the mayor starts going through everybody's background and their financial investment to see if there can, I don't think that.
That's, that's just something that's not typically done. I respectfully disagree with the lady who brought that up. But that, that's, you know, that's, that's not a deep dive that is done in this kind of scenario.
So I'm saying, in addition to schedule that meeting, if the, everybody's here tonight, and that we can do that in addition to anything else, and we will have more information then, and at the end, before the end of the month, and we're still having a public hearing and another meeting. Is, are people agreeable to do this?
Most everybody is, is muted. So the, probably the simplest thing is, if, if you're willing to be a part of that meeting, you just stick it in the chat box and we can get a sense. Because I, I, I'm certainly willing and I would like to. And like I said, I've reached out to a couple of the neighbors and I apologize, I haven't reached out to everyone.
That's Brian, if he's willing, and, and RBT, if they're willing.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we did it in August and, and, and we'd be happy to do it, do it again. And, and I just don't want to sound like a broken record, but we did have Kenny Sather answer three and a half hours of questions in August.
I'm sorry, Brian, but we wouldn't hear in August. I'm not trying to make excuses.
No, I know, I know. But I just, I, maybe Joanne, and Joanne, I met her, and she is a wonderful lady. A sweet, a sweet, sweet lady. So I'm not trying to, maybe she just wasn't at that meeting and that's fine. But we, but we, I just don't want it to be characterized that we just kind of slammed this through, because that's not the case at all.
Sam, if, from what I'm seeing, Nate, if you're seeing anything different, council, if you're seeing anything different, let me know. Sam, can we schedule that meeting tonight and here? Or do we need to still post it fifty days? I don't know. What's the protocol on this? Because we don't.
Well, I mean, for, you, you've got to give adequate public notice for a public meeting. And it's my rule of thumb to do that, that you need to, need to at least do it seven days. So, so maybe calculate ten days out or fifteen days out, whatever is suitable to you. However long it takes, it'll take Mr. Braver to get his information together that Nate wants to share with the public and, and then figure it out. And maybe y'all can put your heads together and figure it out. And then the mayor, either the, the council itself can call a special call meet, meeting, or the, or the mayor can. But, but then we'll have to advertise that it is a special call meeting for further discussion of the, of the development.
I'm, I'm looking at a calendar right now. I see Mary Beth has her hand raised. Nate, do you want to see what she's asking? And then, because we have, I mean, we're not trying to cut anybody off. We're just trying to see what we can do here.
You're, you're, you're getting close to your lawyer's bedtime.
Well.
Because we're in the eastern time zone.
Sorry.
Yeah, I would like to answer the question that you put to the public about meeting with the developers to talk about how they can build a better truck stop. And my answer to that is, we are not there yet. You have not even done the studies. You have not voted on the zoning. What you're telling us is that there's, you've already made up your mind. And it's time for us to talk about site plans. We have not done the groundwork necessary to determine if this is a safe development for the community. And you want us to sit down and talk about a wall. A wall does not fix the problem and we are not there yet. So the, the answer for this homeowner is, is absolutely not. We're not ready to talk about that yet. We haven't got to the point that it's even approved. So what you're telling us is that you've already made up your mind and already are going to vote for it. And we just might as well get used to it and, and figure out what kind of wall we're going to put up. And I don't agree with that. I don't think that's the time for this.
No, Mary Beth, I'm, I'm saying I want the details before we even approve the rezoning, which is well before the site plan would be approved. So I'm asking for the due diligence ahead of time. And I, I hope that's clear. And, you know, I think Sam was very clear that they don't need to do a site plan now. But what I'm saying is, they need to do a site plan for me, because I've got to vote on this rezoning. And if I'm not comfortable with the rezoning, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve. And that's why I'm asking them to work early. And I think everybody on the council is in agreement. We all want this, if it's going to go through, to work for the town. And in order to do that, we are insisting that we meet with the landowners and the potential developer and see if there is common ground before we even vote on the rezoning.
On the, on the completion of it. And that's being fair to everyone. And you know, here's the thing, is regardless of what's put out there and what's said, which will be addressed at another meeting, a lot of truce will be because the documentation is there. We are doing what's right here in trying to take care of the neighbors. One vote does not pass the rezoning.
Right.
As a reword, say, schedule a special meeting. And I'm looking at March the fifteenth. And the majority of the people in council, look at the people that have spoke, majority of the people said they would attend. Nate, you've talked to Brian. I think Brian, and correct me, I haven't seen Brian's post, but said they would attend. So I'm going to leave it to you all. If y'all want to do this, to have this meeting on the fifteenth of March. So. So. But. Sam, when are we at a point that we continue where, where? You know.
You, you, this has been citizens' comment. You've had, you've had close to three hours of citizens' comments. And you've got other business to attend to, Mayor. I think you can't be criticized for not letting the public speak on this.
We can't be criticized, but that's okay. I mean, I'm just, you know, it is.
The only fat lack of fairness is DeeDee has her hands raised and we've only allowed her to talk once. So can we, can we?
Yeah, let's do it.
Give her three minutes. Go ahead, DeeDee.
I just want to say, as I've said before, I'm very supportive of this town and all of you, and very close to the neighbors, close to many of you sitting here on this. And I think it would be very wise for someone to move to delay this vote. If you're going to have the public meeting, give another couple of weeks and let everybody have their say. Everybody do their due diligence, please.
There's a lady, Bethany Frank, said she has not been allowed to speak. Let's give her three minutes.
Find where she is here, council.
I saw she had a something in the chat box.
Yeah, that means I gotta, I gotta find her to, unless Ida Michelle or somebody else can unmute her.
I can't, I'm not controlling it, so.
Frank. Where is she?
Right in the middle of the second page on mine.
Okay, I got, found it. I'm asking her to unmute. Ms. Frank, you're going to have to unmute yourself. I've given you permission. Are you there?
No, she's not unmuted or she is, I think it's on her behalf. She's going to have to unmute herself in her video.
So your mute is in the lower left-hand corner. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to do about this.
Can she chat? Can she, does she had keyed in her, in the chat box? Can she key in something? Tammy wants to speak. Let her speak while Mrs. Tabby Greber's there. So let her speak. Nate, she hasn't spoke.
Okay, she is, she is unmuted. Let me start the timer. Go ahead.
Her video is coming.
Go ahead, Tammy. Tammy is unmuted. Bethany.
Tammy, yeah, Tammy should be up.
Yeah, she's, there she is.
There.
She must be having some sort of volume issue. She's unmuted, but I still can't hear anything.
We can see you, Tammy, but we can't hear you. It's not coming through.
Well, did, did? Well, did, did Ms. Frank figure her technical issues out? Then she's still muted.
Can't hear Tammy. Can Tammy do it without Brian? Good.
I think we're all getting Zoom fatigue. Now I've lost Bethany Frank again to try to unmute her. Something, something happens if you, if you mess up trying to unmute yourself. You have to be given permission to unmute yourself again, so I'm just trying to make sure I got her. Holding down spacebar to speak, I've never tried that one. You'll see in that in the chat box. Though we seem to have lost Bethany Frank altogether, or else I just can't see, or both. Tammy, so sometimes I have found that if you go to audio settings and it says use computer audio, sometimes you have to click that button and that helps you not only hear but also speak. Sam, while we're waiting on them, I had a question from one of the homeowners saying that a, a, a big public meeting is, that they would rather have a small one-on-one just with the developer. And i- is that even legal for the city council and mayor to be there? Or would we have to not be there if it were something small and informal?
You, you do not have to be there. If you, if you are there, you don't necessarily have to, as long as you don't talk to, talk amongst yourselves on this project or any other town business, you can be there and just listen. You know, that's, that's the difference. I mean, if, if you intend to actively participate like you have tonight, then you need to, you know, to, to go through the strictures of the Open Meetings Act. But if you're gonna, just if the, if the developer's going to make himself available along with the information that people have asked for, and, and you just provide the location and you all show up and listen, but don't talk amongst yourselves and don't talk to any of the citizens or anything, just listen, then you're okay.
Okay.
Nate, let's, let's do this according to what's been done tonight. We'll, with Tammy still trying to talk and then Mrs. Bethany is, I think. But if we're going to do this, we need to have it recorded and we need to have, that we made it available to the public.
Right.
We need to have it here with the engineer. Now, you can meet with whomever you want to in your own time, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, we're not dictating things here, but if we're going to do it to this format and we're asking these people to come together, that way it's known as a public meeting and we will have an engineer here, we can have John here, we can have whoever needs to be here to help answer the questions on the behalf that may come up. And we can have Sam here for that one if he is available. If not, you know, then for us, our behalf, till we get this thing resolved. But I'm saying if we do that, we still got a lot to do. I don't know what to do about these two folks that want to speak. Can we go ahead? I mean...
You can, you can absolutely go ahead and then if they get unmuted, then, then you can hear their comments.
So we're not ignoring them, but it's almost nine o'clock and I'm not trying to speed up. I mean, you know, it's just, what would be the will of the council? Do you want to close the comments and address this at this point? Or do you want to, what do you want to do? I'm going to do a roll call here. But I need a motion first. I need a motion, are you ready to end the public comments, all but the two that want to speak, if we can get them unmuted?
Yeah, I mean, if you can get them unmuted in, as we go along, let them speak. But, you know, I mean, if not, then I forgot what the motion was.
You don't even need, you don't even need a motion, your, your time of public comment is ended. There's nobody who's, who's made public comments and several people have made it more than once. So you just move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the reading of the ordinance of 0521 RBT, which would be... It's on it. Folks, I'm getting into it. That is, hey, Sam, do you have that ordinance in front of you?
I do not. You just need to read the caption of it, Mayor.
Okay, ordinance number 05-21, an ordinance to amend the zoning map with the town of Montegoal, Tennessee, to rezone a portion of a partial 002.07 Marion County tax records, map 022K comma group C from R3 High Density Residential District to seat 3 Interchange Commercial District. So, Council, you have the ordinance. Do I hear motion or not to proceed? It's now in your hands.
I make a motion that we delay vote on this ordinance until after we've had public hearing on March 50.
Okay. We have a motion?
So, just so I'm clear, so we're clear and the record's clear. The public hearing will be held, still be held at the meeting in March. But, but you will, will have the second reading in April then or at a special call meeting after that. Jessica, is that what you mean?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We're postponing, we're postponing, you're saying, the reading of this till after we schedule, if we schedule a meeting on March the 15th for the neighbors, the residents, the owners, our engineers and everyone to be here at that meeting at Town Hall.
And we think based on the directive of the governor at that time, that that's liable to be a public meeting?
Well, I mean, you can, the, the governor supposedly is going to extend his order allowing electronic meetings. And I, I guess the question is, what's allowed in, in Marion County?
That's based on, according to Mayor Jackson, that's based, or it was based upon how that we wanted to do them. We had an issue because it was 10 or more in a room, which we could probably control the number, that people were saying they did not want to stand out the hall, they felt degraded because they were doing that. So that's the reason we went to this format, because if somebody were here at the meeting. So we could probably schedule a timeframe saying from 5:00 to 7:00, you know, that people can be here to discuss the issues and have the information here. If the owners and the neighborhood and we are agreeable to schedule this meeting and it would be here at Town Hall and if it's 10 people, it'd only be 10 people in that room at a time. We just have to tackle people in and out, so I know to do, Sam. What would you recommend?
Well, again, again, as long as, as long as the, the council is not meeting as the council and as long as you are not talking amongst yourselves and it's treated as an opportunity for Mr. Gruber to have his engineer there and explain to people what, you know, the answers to some of the questions you've had tonight, then you don't need to, and, and the motion was not to table, somebody just said that. She just moved to postpone it. Is that correct, Jessica?
That's correct.
So we don't have to have a formal motion to bring it off the table next time. But as long as, as long as you don't have to, you know, you're not talking amongst yourself, then, you know, you can do whatever you want to do.
But if we're all going to be there, what I'm saying, what do we need to do to make sure it's a legal meeting? That we're not breaking any sunshine law, we didn't have you there.
Well, and that's what I just said.
Okay.
As long, as long as you don't talk amongst yourselves and there's no discussion amongst yourselves deliberating or, or discussing the pros or cons of this development or anything else, then you don't really have to, to follow the sunshine law. If, if there is a threat of the, of one or two of you getting together and saying that, well, I think this is great or I hate this or something like that, then you'd better do it.
So.
What was the motion? To table it till the?
To, to postpone it.
Postpone it until...
I'll second that.
Until, but we have to schedule the, the March, you wanted to schedule the March 15 meeting?
Yes.
Jessica, with the neighbors and the owners and our engineer in the conference room and we'll follow the governor's order according to, within there.
Yeah, just, just to make sure Sam's on board, the part of the governor's order that Marilyn is concerned about, and I guess I am as well, is that, that part that limited public meetings to gathering and no more than 10 people.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I don't know where they are, you know, there's going to be a new order in the next couple of days.
I, I still think there'll be people that are uncomfortable about getting together in a large group and it would be nice to have the Zoom option for folks that don't want to take a chance on missing the meeting or being in a tight room.
We'll record it, we'll record it. We'll go back to our recordings, Jessica, and we'll use the microphones, which we've got set up. It'll be done, just, we'll have it available on FaceTime. That's all I know to do is to go from there.
Well, you figured out how you put all of this.
I, I think, I think you should advertise it.
That gives us time to advertise it.
That, I think you should advertise it, but, but whether or not somebody's there to keep minutes and whether or not you have a sunshine roster or anything like that just depends on y'all making sure you don't talk amongst yourselves.
Well, it sounds, sir, like it's the public meeting. There's no, there's no order of operations to, to a rezoning, is there?
Yeah.
I mean, can we just do the public meeting?
No, you have, you have to have a formal public hearing. And I don't know whether Debbie has advertised it for this yet or not.
It's not, it can't happen. That, that's the reason it was, if it goes forward, that I'll have to have the timeframe, like you said, Sam, and that'll be later.
Yeah, we, we need to have the public hearing at, at the end of March, like we originally planned.
If we have it, but this is going to be a public meeting to have those questions that you brought up, Nate, and you said Brian's talked about and have the neighbors there to where they can discuss it in a format. But we will record it and we will do it based on law and we won't, for those that want to send in information. We're not going to stop that. That's all, that's the best we can do. We're covering every base we can.
And, and, and I, and I think just to be safe, let's go ahead and advertise it and plan on it being a special call meeting. Because, because just in case, you don't want to have a technical defect in this process.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to postpone this and to schedule a special meeting for March the 15th at Town Hall at 5:00, correct?
Let's do, let's do the postponement first. What you're doing is postponing consideration of this item on the first reading to March 20, whatever, the 28th.
29.
29, and that's your motion, Jessica, right?
Postpone the vote until after the special meeting, which would be, the next council meeting is the 29th of March.
Well, are you postponing it till after the 29th or are you postponing it to the 29th?
To the 29th.
Okay, okay, and Alvin, that's your second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's before you right now and you need a roll call vote, Mayor.
Okay, I just got a message though, they're just, Mayor Jackson just sent me a message, so I'm going to let you know, this just came in. He said he has been watching our meeting and he said the limit to 10 in a public space has been lifted. He says they had a commission meeting tonight, but they were not aware of it. But with our commissioners, they were probably around 10 there. The governor is going to extend 71, but to allow the ability that you can have a public meeting. He said this was 20 and with electronics, so we'll have the public meeting, but we will be recording it so people will have the access, okay? So, I'm reading this and trying to, so the motion has been made and the second, correct?
Correct.
And this is for postponing?
To postponing the first reading to, to the meeting on the 29th of March.
Okay, so, any discussion, Council? Roll call vote, Alvin?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Dorain? Dorain?
Yes.
Jessica? Jessica?
Yes.
So, yes, okay, now, and this is on this issue because we're not done with it yet. Do we have a motion and tell me here, Sam, so we're legal?
Need a, a motion for a special call meeting on March 15th. At what, at what time? 5:00?
5:00 and we'll go to 7:00, I mean, because we don't want to keep you and everybody out that late, you know what I'm saying? But we'll have, the engineers will schedule it to people that can answer those questions, can be here, both on the behalf of the town, the company, the whoever can be here. And with, with written documents that you have discussed with Brian, Nate.
Well, just to let you know that I, I've got a conflict on March 15th, if you expect me to be there, but...
Well, we'll work it out with you. If we have to do something else, if I need you, we'll have you on speed dial.
That, that'll be fine. I've, I've got another, another meeting with one of my other municipalities that night, but starting at, starting at 5:00 your time, but they're usually over before 6:00.
Well, so we'll have you accessible if we need to.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Council, do we have a motion? What do you want to do?
I'll make the motion.
You want to repeat that motion?
Uh, no.
I'm tired. Sam, will you repeat the motion?
Special call meeting for March 15th at 5:00 PM to extend to 7:00 PM.
Yes, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote. Alvin?
Yes.
Dorain?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Deb, you've got that for special call meeting, they'll get you the information. Okay, now, let's move to the first reading of ordinance 0621 Phillips' property. Let me find the ordinance, folks. All right, I had them out, I'm on. I had to reshuffle him. Definitely 0621. Okay, ordinance number 06-21, an ordinance to amend the zoning map for the town of Montegoal, Tennessee, to rezone partial 030401 Grundy County map, 017 from R1 Low Density Residential District to C2 Highway Commercial District.
And Mayor, this is a fix of one of those notice issues that we had previously discussed.
Yes, that there wasn't enough notice given for this.
This the first reading or second reading?
First reading, this is the first reading.
Need a motion?
Need a motion, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Roll call vote. Dorain?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, third. The first reading of the ordinance of the 07-21 election. I'm clarifying us, what this would be is to change the tenure back to the next election cycle. Instead of it being two years for each person, the mayor and two of the high-spoken hitters would be four years. Two of the council people would be on a two-year term. There would be an election, then on that fourth year, the mayor and the other two council persons would, of course, run again. So it keeps continuity in the board. We did have this, actually, there was one cycle we did with this. The previous administration did a cycle of four years and did the rotation. And so what, what happened was that they changed it back. So we have to go through an ordinance, it would not affect us, it would affect the next election cycle, for clarification. So, in the ordinance is 07-21, an ordinance to change the town of Montegoal's tenure of the office to a staggered four-year term. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 0721.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote. Okay. Nate?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Dorain? Myself, yes. Okay, that's done. The next thing would be, and I'm going to, you've got three three website designer quotes, period. That's what we've got, interpellate. One is for Roman Stone, which we've had for several months, and his, now, this is not maintenance, this is getting our website updated, it's getting information on there, it's providing it to where we're up to date. It's also redesigning. We have one from Wolfen, Dale Wolfen, who has done the Cornbread Festival, and we have one from GoDaddy. GoDaddy was like 1897, hold on a second, I'm gonna say exactly what they were. I found those notes. GoDaddy was 1857, Roman Stones was 4,700, Dale Wood, Wolfen was $1,757.
And I just put a fourth one up on a screen share. He's got, they're all a little bit different, so that's why I put them up.
Well, here's something that I would like the council, this is $1,250. Now, we would stay with Ben Lemmon's hosting, because they do not charge us, and if people do not realize that that website was created, probably, Alvin, what'd you say, nine years ago, something like that, because we had the first one. And there's only been information added. So I know that it's been asked for presentation, what I would like to do, and we're going with four web designers, we have their information. I would like to do a Zoom meeting, and the best for us, for the best web designer, they can have it turned around in the best time, not rushing anything, but we need to get this information out there to the public, because the website is very important, we've all stressed, not only social media and other things, so not to exceed $2,000, which anonymously takes Mr. Stone out for his, but that still gives us a Zoom presentation that can be viewed. Somebody's saying, one of y'all saying something. Presentation from Aaron Wells. We can look at the GoDaddy and see what they can provide us, and Mr. Wolfen. Mr. Wolfen, I did see his work, and he does the National Cornbread Festival, his, I mean, some of his websites are pretty outstanding. I don't know the gentleman, but I know he works, he's in Marion County. We do have Mr. Wolfen area. And GoDaddy's been doing it for years, so what I would like to do is to say, the bidding threshold for the town, the bidding threshold for the town's $5,000, but we just prefer to handle it this way, so we know what we're doing. The $2,000 for the web design and the process, and that way we can get this started, because minimum date that we've got, and we don't have one from a couple of them, is six weeks out to be able to get it out there. And I mean, people want the information, so.
I like to be the budget hawk, but I'd like, I'd like to actually say, yes, we move that up to 2,500 or 2,800, and the reason is because the bids are so variable, we don't exactly know what we're gonna get, and as we talk to them more, I think things are gonna change. I think there are gonna be some people that we like that aren't gonna realize all the stuff we need, and I feel like it'd give us more flexibility.
Well, and that's fine, and they can zoom us online and send them to us, if we can have the amount approved, and just can be, we can approve it. I'm just, I was trying, I don't, I think 4,500 is a little excess for that, so I think if we go 2,800?
If people feel comfortable with that.
Very much.
Okay, so if, can we have a motion not to exceed 2,800 to pick a web designer, and this is a web designer for the town of Montegoal? I mean, I'm just, this is what I'm asking for per the council, but not to exceed that, so that can be determined from the Zoom meeting, and then from that point, they'll start working on it, and hopefully, and we know it's gonna be six weeks, but we can have something that people can YouTube, they can find the website, they can find social media, they can find the addendums, you know, the information is there for. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion up to, authorizing up to $2,800 to hire a web designer to put together a new town website.
Do we have a second? Dorain, roll call vote. I'm sorry, let me, I'm on the turn.
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Council, do y'all have anything else? I think our agenda's been covered, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm going to clarify that, the ball field, we've already discussed that program. Do y'all have anything else tonight?
Was there anything else on Sarah Ambrose?
Yeah, so she's on my list. I followed up with her and told her that we had talked about it, but that we probably wouldn't have a resolution at this meeting. I asked her if she was getting a liquor license, and she said that she was, and so per Marilyn's idea that we stick with the state specu, the state regulations, she'll go through that liquor license process, and so we'll know, we'll know that she's gotten that, and that may, will help us move forward. In the meantime, I think we gotta get, I think I promised to get with Debbie and sort of see what the ordinances are, so we can talk about it some more.
MTS is reviewing that too, Nate.
Oh, cool. MTS do it.
Well, point of contact, I'm just gonna clarify this, they do not give you legal opinions. They do make, they can make a recommendation, but not a legal opinion, that's the reason we have attorneys, but they do have laws in which that they will, you know, provide us the law for the state of Tennessee, so we use them because they're free access, they're free resource. So they're looking at that as well.
Question. We had talked about doing the budget hearing on the 11th of next month. Now we're gonna have a public hearing. Do we need to have a budget meeting?
We do need to have a budget meeting.
So. Oh, yeah, you're right. We sure did.
Say that again.
Hmm?
Say that first part again.
I don't even remember what I said. I've been on here a long time.
You're right. We start the budget meetings on March the 8th, that Monday?
Um, let me check the calendar. I'm gonna suppose we can. I don't see a reason why we can't. If Deb's gotta check with the CPA, and she'll get dates for us, and then we can see if we can do that.
Can it not be three hours and 20 minutes long?
We're trying.
All right, I'm good with the 8th. I think. Yes, I'm good with the 8th.
Yeah, I know it's good with us, if it's good with CPA, so we can schedule a budget meeting.
What, we do have time enough to announce it? Because that's gonna be
Do what, Deb? She said a budget meeting is not usually a public meeting, is it? What about, Sam, you're here. The budget meetings are that public? Did Sam leave us?
No, no, he's there. Oh, ask to unmute, sorry.
He's getting ready to go to bed. Sam, our budget meetings, public meetings?
Yes, any meeting that you have where you discuss public business is a public meeting.
Would be actually a public, it'd be a budget workshop, so we can just announce the workshop, so.
Well, you need to advertise it to keep very rudimentary minutes, everything. You have to comply with the sunshine law every time you guys meet.
So let's just see what date it is, and we'll schedule it out with the CPA, and comply with the sunshine law.
Yeah, I mean, alternately, we could do a three and a half hour workshop meeting on the 20th second.
Yeah, let's try not to, come on. But anyhow, let's just let's see what the CPA can do, and then we can schedule it according to sunshine law, okay? Does that work with y'all? Because we need them here to answer the questions. Okay, we will have a calendar event that we discussed. That'll be sent to you all. I know we've always discussed, and also sending out to the community and to people that said they want to be involved, if they want to, if they want to donate, that way we're not nibbling, doming them to death from the ball program down to Christmas, but that's being prepared. So, does anyone have anything else?
I make a motion to the chairman.
Roll call.
Wait a second, we need a second. Did you?
Second.
Okay, Dorain?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you.
Hi, y'all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, Sam.